Good evening and welcome to the Anaheim Planning Commission meeting, November 17th, 2025. My name is Christopher Walker, Chair of the Anaheim Planning Commission. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast on all channels, including online and Anaheim TV Channel 3. The first order of business is to salute our flag. Commissioner Perez will lead us in the flag salute.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I applaud your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I will ask Planning Commissioner Secretary to take a verbal roll call vote of all Planning Commissioners.
Chair Walker.
Present.
Vice Chair Tran Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Abdul Rahman.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you would please all silence your electronic communication devices so that they don't just disrupt the proceeding, we would appreciate that. The doors at the back of the room are automatic. They open when you get close to them and they don't close until you walk down the hall. Please move away from the automatic doors and allow them to close. Today, we have five public hearing items on our agenda. I would ask members of the public who wish to speak on one of the pub, one or more of the public hearing items, please complete a yellow speaker card and give it to staff if you have not already done so. The cards can be found at the table at the entrance. Please note, the public comments are limited to three minutes. We ask that you keep your remarks as brief as you can. We are influenced more by the content than the length of your presentations. Our next item is considered, is consideration of the Planning Commission meeting calendar for 2026. Each year, the commission is asked to review and adopt a meeting schedule for the upcoming calendar year. The draft 2026 meeting calendar has been provided to all commissioners. Are there any questions?
Oh, sorry.
You okay? Okay. If there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
No discussion? Shall we vote? I think it's roll call, I believe, for this one.
Chair Walker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tran Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here, yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Commissioner Castro.
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul Rahman.
Yes.
The calendar is approved.
Thank you. First, we provide an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? We don't have any cards on this, I'm assuming. See no one, I'll move on. Prior to beginning the public hearing, I will ask now that any planning commissioners for any disclosures they wish to make regarding the public hearing item on today's agenda. I'm sure we all have something. Anybody? Go ahead, Michelle.
Yes, I have met with the developers on items number four and five.
Go ahead.
I met with the consultant for item one, briefly spoke about the project. Items four, I also met with the consultants and I want to disclose that I worked for Shea Mortgage 25 years ago. I have not had any working relationship with them since then, so this will not affect my decision. And item five, I also met with OC five.
Go ahead.
I had communication with the applicant of item five.
Anything? Go ahead.
I have communication with item five, but I didn't meet him.
Okay.
And then I had communication with representatives for the applicant, or for applicant on item four, and then a meeting with the applicants for item five.
And I have met with the applicants' representatives for items four and five as well.
And I have met with the applicant for five. I've had email communications with the applicant's agent for four, and I've had email communications with several people in the, in the area. Please note that the actions taken by the Planning Commission tonight will be final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk. The appeal deadline is Thursday, November 27th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. Appeal forms are available on the city clerk's webpage. Please note that public items two, three, and four are not appealable as the city council is the final decision-making body on these three items. I will now begin item, the public hearing and ask staff to present item one.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Walker and members of the Planning Commission. Item number one before you this evening is a request for approval of a conditional use permit and a parking variance to establish the Tesla Anaheim Collision Center and automotive repair use within an existing industrial building located at 5472 East La Palma Avenue. The nearly three-acre project site is shown as the highlighted parcel. It is developed with a 3,800 square foot industrial building and located in development area number one of the Anaheim Canyon specific plan and designated for industrial land uses in the general plan. Surrounding land uses include an industrial building serving various dance and fitness studios to the north, a contractor yard and food distributor to the east, a manufacturing lab to the west, and the Santa Ana River to the south. The property is occupied by a warehouse with an accessory office for a heating ventilation air conditioning contractor business. The proposed collision center would use advanced diagnostic tools to assess vehicle damage, prepare insurance estimates, and identify necessary repairs. The services offered would also include vehicle disassembly, structural restoration, precision laser guided alignment, cosmetic refinishing, sanding, and paint work. To accommodate the use, the applicant is proposing both interior and exterior improvements. The exterior improvements consist of installation of a six-foot tall chain link fence with slats to screen the vehicle storage area, restriping of the parking stalls, and reconfiguration of the land seed planters along the north drive aisle. Additionally, the facade would be improved in line with Tesla corporate branding and color scheme. The proposed interior improvements include construction of new service bays, wash bays, and paint booth and associated storage and office areas as reflected in the floor plan. The proposed interior improvements include construction of new, sorry, the facility would provide, would be open to the public from Monday through Friday, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, while repair operations would be conducted from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM as needed. The project site would have 45 spaces to accommodate both customer and employee parking as a portion of the existing parking stalls would be reallocated to storage. Customer and employee stalls are highlighted in purple while the storage area is in blue. According to the letter of operation, the facility would have a maximum of 42 employees across two shifts and up to three customers onsite at any one time, with customer visits scheduled exclusively through the Tesla app and by appointment only. Walk-in services would not be available. The red stalls at the top of the screen are 30 additional spaces available to the project site through recorded CCNRs. Based on the operating characteristics and combined onsite and offsite parking supply, staff believes the site can accommodate the expected parking demand. As proposed, the project meets all the required findings for a conditional use permit and variance. The auto repair use is compatible with the surrounding land uses and the proposed operation plan and combined parking supply would ensure that adequate parking would be available to accommodate the daily needs of customers and staff. It would not result in adverse impacts to the surrounding properties, traffic, or parking. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the application, subject to conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer questions.
Thank you for that report. Okay, try as I might, looking at all the diagrams, I could not figure out the vehicle circulation. And what I would like to know is, is how customers will be, customers will be traveling through this area and figuring out where to park. The employees, I'm not worried about because in two days, they'll, they'll know what they're doing.
So the project site takes access from La Palma. There is a drive aisle that leads to the, the east of the property and it leads down this one-way drive aisle and onto the site.
On the left of your screen, correct?
Yes, here. So it would, they would come down La Palma, onto the site, navigate to this one-way drive aisle.
Wait, 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 wait. I thought the drive aisle was on the left.
So this is not the drive aisle that would access the site? They would come from La Palma and lead to this drive aisle.
Okay, so look, but looking at the aerial of this area, the property next door, that's, that's another property's parking lot. That, so that's how people get through there, not on the left?
Right. The access to this site is from the right. There are recorded access, reciprocal access agreements that grant them access to this side of the property.
Okay, so customers will have no doubt what driveway to drive, pull in on La Palma and through, you know, wayfinding signs and getting through there. And I'm sure there's a, I could hardly even figure out where the entrance door is on this thing, but I think it's the top left of the building.
The entry is at the middle of the building.
Okay. See? Okay.
Customers would not have access to the east drive aisle. They would only have access to, to the, the, sorry, the east drive aisle, not the west. And this is, these would be the available parking spaces. There will be signage available and arrows leading them down this drive aisle.
Okay, that, see, that makes sense if they're coming in on the right, you know, the parking's all configured for them to park there. So they're gonna leave at that first exit. I see the pink line, there's a, a gate there. I mean, is it gonna be open, closed most of the time, or partially closed, or how people, how are customers gonna know, oh, this is the way I go out?
There will be, there is a condition of approval. Let's see. Condition number seven, that would require the applicant to delineate the drive aisle that will show them the way to navigate and circulate through their site.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a couple questions. So the customers can access this lot only if they go through the, the app, right? The Tesla app?
Yes, so customers would need to coordinate and their appointment in advance. There is no walk-in service available.
Okay, and there's a maximum of three allowed at any one time?
Yes, there's a maximum of three appointments that would be available.
And how do they stop people from entering? Is there a gate up at the entrance on the east side?
So the entry is on the east, along the west property line, there is a gate. The pink is a gate that they will not have access to.
Okay, so, but if there's no gate on the east, how do you keep people from just coming on the site without having an appointment?
Just like any business, we wouldn't be keeping people from showing up onsite. They'll just know that they're not supposed to drop their car off or service until they've made an appointment through the app, through the Tesla app.
Okay.
We don't anticipate that there'll be people showing up just willy-nilly to drop their car off. And I think if they do, there'll be plenty of parking spaces that they can use. They'll go inside and they'll say, sorry, you have to have an app, app appointment through the app.
Okay, sounds efficient. Okay, I have no further questions. Anyone else? With, with that, I'll open the public hearing and if the applicant would like to come forward.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Good evening, Commissioners. Good to see you, Chairman, or Commissioner Lieberman. My name is Dave Seehan. I'm here tonight representing the applicant owner, Green Law Partners, and the future tenant, Tesla. With me tonight is also the, the property owner and Tesla to answer any questions, and I think I can answer some of the questions that came up. But I don't have much more to add in addition to what staff presented tonight. They did a really good job of explaining the project. We did work closely for many months, working with staff on fencing and screening and circulation and fire department access, so all those have been vetted out and we believe it's, it's gonna be running very efficiently. To your question, Heidi, can I ask, so you go to the aerial? I think that shows it better. Yeah, so right there, I think this puts it more in context. If you see the green stripe that Commissioner Lieberman was referring to, that is the westerly access from La Palma. Employees and customers can come down there, but they would have to go through the adjacent property to come one way on, from the easterly end, or they can come from the other driveway from the east. There's actually two accesses, so hopefully this makes it more clear. And yes, to confirm, the appointments are done by app. It's not a high-volume number of customers coming to the site and just dropping off cars. It doesn't work that way. And then lastly, we did review the staff report and resolution. We agree with the conditions of approval and don't have anything else to add other than we can, we're here to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions? Very good. Do we have any cards on this one? No. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Very good. I'm gonna close the public hearing and do we have a motion or a discussion?
I have a motion. Move the motion to approve this project.
And I'll second.
Very good. Further discussion? No? Let's vote.
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Very good. Hello? Would you like to begin? Whenever you're ready.
Yes, good evening and thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm JJ Jimenez, Parks Manager, and with me tonight is Ana Stravez, Principal Project Planner, as well as other city staff and consulting team in the audience. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the OC Riverwalk Project's environmental impact report. We are pleased to present this item to the Planning Commission. This EIR represents the culmination of multiple years of work across city departments with various stakeholder groups in our community. Tonight, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommend city council certification of the OC Riverwalk Environmental Impact Report and adopt findings of fact and mitigation monitoring plan. monitoring plan. For your information, the approval of the master plan for this project is within the purview of the Park and Rec Commission. Certification of the EIR is within the discretion of the city council, which will be considered later this year. The O.C. Riverwalk Project encompasses approximately a two-mile stretch of the Santa Ana River, covering almost 111 acres. Specifically, the project stretches from Orangewood on the southern edge to north of Ball Road, connecting to the existing Anaheim Coves. Notable adjacent properties include Anaheim Stadium, Arctic, and O.C. Bank. Property owners include County of Orange Public Works, Caltrans, Orange County Transportation Authority, Union Pacific Railroad, and Orange County Water District. The design and implementation of this project requires collaboration and partnerships. These are just some of the entities who we are working with, ranging from regulatory agencies to funding partners, landowners, neighbors, and advisory bodies. As important to this project is our community. Utilizing the clever tagline, "What would take you to the river?", we developed a robust community input process for this project. As shown on this slide, we used a variety of tools to gather our public's desires for this space and they but, develop a project description for the EIR. The project area mirrors the image shown on this slide for most of the year, with, with no water and only a functional regional bike trail. There are limited opportunities for recreation and for our community to engage with the river. This is the overall vision. The main components of the project involve creating water impoundments, modifying the east and west riverbanks, constructing two pedestrian and bicycle bridges, providing new trails, improving the existing trails, enhancing community and recreational amenities, and other improvements identified in the EIR. The final EIR analyzes potential environmental impacts of this project. The master plan is the result of collaboration with stakeholders and conversations with our community. This is their vision. The project improvements would require the implementation of 19 elements, which have been categorized into four groups within the EIR. We will quickly review these groups in the following slides. Group A includes impoundments, storm drain diversions, and bankments that will place water in the river along for groundwater recharge and recreation. Next is Group B, new pedestrian and bike bridges that will enhance the use of the regional bicycle trail and connect communities to each other. Group C are the trails and trail improvements. The black dotted line represents the existing Santa Ana River Trail. The pink line is the O.C. Riverwalk proposed trail extension to the Anaheim Coves. These improvements will create enhanced connectivity for the community. Group C consists of enhanced community recreational areas, beginning with River Park. We will create open spaces for events and activities that will provide new ways for people to experience the river. We will also provide new access points and modify the banks of the river to create stairs and seating for people to recreate. Lastly, we will revitalize the river through art, education, signage, native plants, nature, overlooks, and more. And in doing so, we will redefine the river as a place for people and nature. Staff has prepared an EIR in accordance with CEQA and CEQA guidelines to analyze environmental impacts related to the project. Where impacts were found to be potentially significant, mitigation measures were incorporated to lessen those impacts. The final EIR, which includes the draft EIR, responses to comments made on the draft EIR, and mitigation monitoring plan have all been made available on the city's website. We are now at the public hearing stage of the environmental review process. To inform the public of the preparation of the draft EIR on March 23rd, 2023, a notice of preparation and initial study were published and circulated for public review between March 23rd and April 24th of that year. On March 29th, 2023, the city held a scoping meeting at the Honda Center to solicit, to solicit input from the public on the environmental topics to be studied during the preparation of the draft EIR. The scoping meeting was also made available to attend virtually. At the end of the public period, a total of nine agencies and interested parties provided written comments. On July 24th, 2025, the draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day public review period. In total, the city received seven comment letters. And finally, on November 4th, 2025, the draft EIR, which includes responses to the public comments, was released to the public for their review. The EIR identified topics that were found to have no impact, as shown on the screen. The EIR also identified topics that were found to have impacts that are considered to be less dissignificant and therefore do not require any mitigation. Some topics were found to be potentially significant but could be reduced to less dissignificant with appropriate mitigation measures. Some notable mitigation measure, measures include monitoring by a qualified biologist, entering into maintenance and operations agreements as necessary, noise reduction during construction, and tribal monitoring during ground disturbing activities. A full list of the mitigation measures are included in the mitigation monitoring plan. Based on the analysis conducted, the project would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts. As such, again tonight, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommend city council certification of the O.C. Riverwalk Environmental Impact Report and adopt the findings of fact and mitigation monitoring plan. This concludes our presentation. We, we would like to thank the Planning Commission for your consideration of this item, and staff and our consultant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions, but I did want to disclose and apologies for not doing this earlier. My husband does serve on the city's Parks and Rec Commission, and so this plan has gone before them. So it's not a conflict of interest, but did want to disclose that.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and no cards. I will close the public hearing. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
No discussion, shall we vote?
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Hello, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Mr. Nicholas, you may go.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sean Nicholas, Principal Planner, and I will be presenting the 2025 Annual Code Update, along with Deputy Planning and Building Director, Joanne Huang. The Annual Code Update includes amendments to provide clarity, create consistency of terms and definitions, streamline approval processes, comply with changes in state law, amend code requirements to reflect current market trends, and support city council strategic plan priorities. Attachment two of the staff report for this item provides a comprehensive summary of the proposed code amendments, but I will highlight a few of the notable changes this year for the benefit of the Planning Commission. For ADUs, once again, changes in state law and interpretations are requiring the city to make amendments. The amendments this year are primarily associated with ADUs for single-family properties. The first update is to change the number of ADUs that can be developed associated with a proposed or existing single-family residence. Currently, the city allows a primary dwelling unit, one ADU either attached or detached, and one JADU converted from existing space within the primary dwelling for a maximum of three potential dwelling units on a single-family lot. Pursuant to changes in state law, a property owner can now potentially have a total of four dwelling units on a single-family residential lot by having a primary unit, convert space within an existing or proposed single-family residence to create an ADU, a second new construction ADU, then lastly, still a JADU converted of existing space of the primary residence or attached to a new construction detached ADU. Another, another change that comes into effect on January 1st, 2026, is the city can no longer require a deed restriction, requiring property owner occupancy within a JADU on-site. For the past several years, every JADU was required to record a deed restriction, requiring someone with property ownership interest in the plot to live on-site within one of the units as their primary residence. The city will no longer be able to require this, except when a JADU shares sanitation facilities with the primary residence or detached ADU it is constructed with. In addition, there are other minor updates proposed and would clarify and specify certain existing standards to further comply with state law. Employee housing for agricultural use changes will implement both recent state law changes and our housing element. The changes create the terms employee housing, both small and large, as either residential uses or a non-residential class of use based on size. In general, employee housing small would be allowed where residential uses are allowed, and employee housing large would be allowed where agricultural uses are allowed. In addition, employee housing would be tied directly to the primary use of agricultural crops as its accessory use. Lastly, the modifications to this section also include the removal of the outdated term agricultural workers' quarters. There are two updates associated with landscape requirements within the ACU. The first update modifies our existing landscape requirements to reflect recent trends to move towards a more drought-tolerant design, including decorative ground cover so there is no bare dirt. We are also reducing the percentage of landscape coverage from, to 65% from 75% to reflect the growth style and size of drought-tolerant plant species. The second update to landscaping is to the tree lists in our scenic corridor overlay of the zoning code. In particular, trees that may be planted on private property or on slopes within the scenic corridor. Recently, the Public Works Department completed an evaluation of all the tree species within the city, as well as the various lists that can be planted, of trees that can be planted in the city, for example, like our rye-toe trees. Based on that citywide effort, Public Works provided the list of trees that should be maintained on our lists, should be added, and should be removed. Lastly, these updates further clean up provisions associated with signage and parking structure heights in both the Disneyland Resort-specific plan, Plan and Anaheim Resort-specific plan. The sign changes provides clarification related to how the sign area for a use is determined. The code currently, currently uses the term street frontage, and the amendment would change it to tenant frontage, which is also in line with the citywide sign code requirements. For the parking structure height requirement, it further cleans up language from the Disneyland Forward Amendments. But to be clear, this amendment does not physically change or modify any associated requirements, just makes it clear what the requirements are. There are additional amendments provide, proposed to provide clarity, regulatory relief, and updates to requirements based on changes to state laws on various topics. And as mentioned earlier, attachment two to your staff report provides a summary of all of those changes. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the Annual Code Update, and this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to address any of the commissioners' questions. Thank you.
Thank you, any commissioners. Commissioner Lieberman?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Nicholas. I hope you have with you available to bring up on the screen all of the redlined stuff you did, or that someone has done, because I don't have them in front of me, just my notes.
I do not have every single redline on a PowerPoint slide, no.
Okay, well, that's basically the stuff, a few of those items that I want to address. Okay, so let me just go through it. Section, I'm going to be real specific.
Commissioner, just if I, I'll bring it up.
Okay, that, I think it'll help. So I have on page 17, section 26, regarding the ADUs. Okay, on, on this page, it's very clear, it lists three types of ADUs allowable, and summarizes about the, the, the three ADUs you can build, plus the primary residence for a total of four. Okay, I guess we didn't need to look at this page. Let's go to page 28, where it's summarized a little differently, and I got really confused. So maybe you want to clarify it. Okay, on this table here, which, Joanne, if you could go and show the top of the table, I think it says, yeah, two-unit development. You know, we're, we, I do realize we're not getting the full picture of everything here. We're just getting the part that you're changing. But, okay, so I'm looking at this two-unit development attached to existing main dwelling, and it summarizes down on point 0506, that, in, in addition to the two units permitted in that table, two additional units may be constructed as ADUs, and a maximum, and a maximum of four units on any single-family dwelling. So I'm adding this up. It's the two units from the, from this chart, the list, in, plus two units, plus the, the residents that's sitting there makes five. Okay, that's the way I, I read it a few times, so I know what your intention is, but at least to me, it's not clear, so you might want to try to make it a little clearer. Okay, that's just my recommendation on that item. So let's move to page 28. Oh, is it same, the same thing, down at the bottom of this chart, it says, notwithstanding above height limitations shall not prohibit the construction of an 800-square-foot unit. What does this mean? Explain this to me.
So this whole section, Table 38C, is part of our two-unit development in urban lots, but so what the commission probably remembers as SB 9. So this is a separate section outside of accessory dwelling units. What we have primarily done here is just accurately reflected that an ADU can be developed with a two-unit development. So to be clear, it would be a total, and that's why we made it clear, with the maximum of four units, there will only ever be four units maximum associated with an SB 9 project included if they decide to do an ADU with those units. Now, in terms of the, the 800-square- Now, in terms of the 800-square-foot unit note, as required by state law, again, associated with SB 9, there are no provisions that we can enforce that would prohibit someone from developing at least 800 square feet. So to be consistent and clear with that fact, which has already been our policy for the last four to five years in which SB 9 has existed, and similar with ADUs as well, it's consistent with ADU law, has the same requirements. It's just making it clear that nothing can prohibit them from developing it, including height limitations. That's what it is providing.
Okay, so that's out of the city's control, the state's dictating that.
Yes, Commissioner.
So if somebody wants a 200-foot footprint, 200-square-foot footprint, they can build a four-story ADU?
Potentially, but usually I would tell you that staff would work hard to develop other alternatives.
Okay, all right. As long as this is coming from the city, I'm happier with that. Okay, so let us move to page, am I going backwards? 23, page 23. This has to do with historic buildings under section 31, changing design under point 090, historic buildings. You're changing the, where the design standards are applicable from what was the, well, National Register, California Register of Historic Places and the city's list of local historic inventory for homes that will be covered with the design guidelines, okay? And you're changing the cities from Anaheim's local historic inventory, which is, I believe, over 1,000 homes citywide, to only homes with a Melzack contract, which is 400 and something. And I have a big problem with that, because you're changing the scope drastically. And so what's the impetus here?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, again, this is 100% driven by state law. In fact, in talking with HCD, they very directly pointed out the fact that we cannot utilize our local historic inventory as a basis for requiring these additional requirements associated, and this is directly associated with accessory dwelling units, engineer accessory dwelling units. So this is separate from the SB 9 items we were just talking about. But because someone is under a Melzack contract, because that's a legal document, there are other requirements associated with it that may be applicable. But again, it is, they have made it very clear that their enforcement, the way HCD interprets it, is that they want it clear that it is only national or state, California State historic lists.
And Melzack would qualify that, wouldn't it?
It qualifies it because it is a legal agreement, in essence, with the city, so there are other requirements and other factors that come into play with those.
Okay, I was ready to die on this one, so. Okay, let's move on. Something very petty, page 23, section 31, under point 105. But since it's in the actual verbiage of the ordinance, I'm going to point it out. If you make grammatic errors in a staff report, you never hear from me, but this is different. Under point 105, you have the word "separate" in there twice in one sentence, and that both times are used incorrectly, and it needs to be corrected to "separately". And if you want me to explain why, I'd be happy to, but, or you can take my word for it or Google it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Now, let's move on to page 32, section 49, where, under 0502 and 0503, you did touch upon the drought-tolerant plants. But since you already have the words, you're adding the word "plants" in here, to add it again as drought-tolerant plants is redundant and shouldn't be there. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I just have a couple clarifications on one specific area, and that is the holiday decorations removal. Can you tell us what that new requirement is compared to the old requirement?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this is something that came to us from our colleagues in code enforcement. It's a pretty common issue that we see that a lot of times these holiday decorations will be left up long past the holiday in which it was representing, and they start to see that it is becoming a nuisance. They're falling down. They may not be, they may not be built to be outside for that long of a period and exposed to the, to expose the elements. So the purpose of that is for these holiday-related items and decorations that they will have to be removed within those 45 days. And this is separate from something like a permanent type of installation, you know, that you typically see over like a patio cover or associated with like a patio cover or other types of permanent installation.
Okay, so anything that's meant to be permanent is not covered by the 45 days?
This is not addressed, no.
If I could just add, Chair, part of the impetus is, relates to more particular electrical lighting. A lot of holiday-type decorations is meant to be more temporary, not permanent. So there have been experiences in other cities and also code enforcement who can speak to this, a concern about not removing those electrical cords and whatnot within a certain amount of time is a health-safety issue, and that's why this code is being drafted as it is.
Okay, so as far as electrical lighting, you're concerned about temporary lighting that has cords or potentially dangerous situations? So permanent lighting would not be included? Okay, very good. Anyone have any other questions? I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm assuming we have no cards. We do not. So I will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion or any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Shall we vote?
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you. Moving on to item four. I will remind people that if you haven't done a yellow speaker card, please do so and hand it to staff. Whenever you're ready, Amanda.
Good evening, Chair Walker and members of the Planning Commission. I am Amanda Lauffer, and I will be presenting the Anaheim Hills Festival Project. With me is Elaine Team Presidi, Principal Planner. This item is a request for a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, including amendments to the zoning code, final site plan and development agreement to establish a new development area within the existing boundaries of the Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan to accommodate residential uses in combination with the existing commercial development. The project includes demolition of the vacant movie theater site and construction of 447 multiple-family units within the upper tier of the festival shopping center. This item requires Planning Commission review and recommendation to the City Council for approval. Tonight, I will provide a brief overview of the existing conditions and specific plan background, general overview of the proposed project and requested entitlements, review of key components of the environmental analysis, and staff's recommendation to the commission. The Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan is generally located along Santa Anna Canyon Road between Festival Drive and Roosevelt Road and encompasses approximately 85.7 acres. The specific plan was originally adopted by the City Council in May 1990 and has been amended five times. The specific plan is divided into different development areas as shown on the screen. Development Areas 1 through 3, shown in the red, are the commercial areas of the specific plan known as the festival shopping center. And Development Area 4, shown in orange, is the senior residential community. The existing specific plan area is designated for regional commercial and low-medium-density residential land uses in the general plan. The surrounding land uses include a business park to the north across Santa Anna Canyon Road, a utility transmission corridor containing SCE power lines, undeveloped private parcels, and the Deer Canyon Park Preserve to the west, office and institutional uses to the east across Roosevelt Road, and single-family residential to the south. The property is zoned SP 90-1 for the Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan. Existing zoning in the vicinity includes general commercial, transitional, open space, low-intensity office, and single-family residential. The proposed project would establish a new development area, DA 5, within the existing boundaries of the Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan to accommodate residential uses in combination with the site's existing commercial development. DA 5 would be created from reallocating land from the existing Development Area 2, reducing its size from approximately 48 acres to 31.8 acres. The resulting 16.2-acre area would form the new DA 5 as shown here in the green hatch color. All proposed development would be confined to DA 5, and the overall exterior boundary of the specific plan would remain unchanged. Approximately 57,500 square feet of existing commercial square footage would remain in DA 5. The proposed project includes the demolition of the existing vacant cinema within the proposed DA 5 for the development of a 447-unit multiple-family residential community. I would like to read into the record that Table 1 in the staff report incorrectly notes a total of 477 units. The proposed multiple-family building would be four stories in height and wrapped around a six-level parking structure, including one subterranean level, for a total of 57 feet. The apartments include one, two, and three-bedroom options ranging in size from approximately 590 square feet to 1,500 square feet. A total of 10% or 45 units would be designated for moderate-income affordable units. Each floor plan would include a private patio or balcony space. Additional resident amenities include two indoor clubhouses, two swimming pools, a courtyard, a fitness center, co-work area, and ride-share lounge. The applicant is also proposing a fenced dog park along the easterly portion of the site and a bluff park along the north property line that would be privately owned and maintained but open to the residents of the new community and the general public. Primary access into the development area would be provided from an existing driveway along Festival Drive leading to a new entry court and roundabout near the multiple-family leasing office entrance. A new resident-only driveway is also proposed along Festival Drive for direct access into the gated parking structure. All driveways for the commercial center would remain the same. The proposed multiple-family building includes a Mediterranean architectural style consistent with the design guidelines in the specific plan. The building features smooth white stucco with wrought iron, decorative tile, stone accents, decorative metal siding, clay tile roof, varied roof planes, and recessed windows. Sections of the building closest to Festival Drive would be three stories in height, while the remainder of the building would be four stories. The multiple-family building would wrap around the six-level parking structure, screening it from public view. The project includes a six-level wrapped parking structure that would include parking for the residents, guests, and visitors of the commercial center. A total of 954 parking spaces would be available in the parking structure, which includes the gated, resident-restricted parking on the subterranean and upper levels. The first floor of the structure would be available to guests and patrons of the commercial center. A total of 329 surface parking spaces would also be available in DA 5. As part of the project, the applicant prepared a parking analysis to demonstrate that the parking available in DA 5 would be sufficient based on the mix of uses. Based on the proposed parking requirements in the specific plan amendment, a total of 893 parking spaces are required for the residential uses. A total of 362 spaces are required for the commercial uses based on their individual parking requirements. The residential and commercial uses have differing peak hours. Residential uses observe peaks in the evening hours between 7:00 p.m. and midnight, while commercial uses have a higher peak during midday. As part of the analysis, a survey was also conducted at six existing communities that are owned and managed by the property, by the project applicant with similar property characteristics. The survey found that the average occupied rate for the multiple-family units was 1.87 spaces per unit. The proposed project would provide 2.0 spaces per unit. Reciprocal, reciprocal access and parking is also provided between Development Areas 1, 2, and 5. Based on the number of spaces available, mix of uses with differing peak hours, and observed rates at similar communities, staff has determined that there is adequate parking for the proposed project. The project requires a number of discretionary applications that require review by the Planning Commission. These include a general plan amendment to the land use element, a specific plan amendment to amend the Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan document, and relevant zoning and development standards in Chapter 18.108 of the municipal code, a final site plan for the construction of the 447-unit multiple-family community and associated improvements, a development agreement between the city and the property owner, and certification of Environmental Impact Report Number 358 for the project. The project requires an amendment to the general plan land use element to change the land use designation from DA 5 from regional commercial to mixed-use medium depicted in green and red hatching. The mixed-use medium designation is intended to allow for flexibility for parcels that could transition from strip commercial uses to residential or a mix of residential, commercial, and office development. This designation allows for residential development in a standalone or mixed-use configuration at a density of up to 36 dwelling units per acre, while the non-residential component of mixed-use development is permitted at a maximum floor area ratio, or FAR, of 0.35. The proposed residential portion of the project would result in a density of 27.4 dwelling units per acre, and the remaining commercial buildings in DA 5 would result in a FAR of .09. The project would provide a mix of uses in DA 5 that are consistent with the allowable density and FAR for the land use designation. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommends City Council approval of the general plan amendment. The applicant is requesting a specific plan amendment to amend the Anaheim Hills Festival-specific plan document and corresponding chapter of the zoning code in their entirety. This would be the Sixth Amendment to the specific plan and would establish a new development area, D A five, within the existing boundaries to accommodate the proposed residential development in conjunction with the commercial development. The specific plan would include a new format that is more consistent with newly adopted specific plans, would update various tables and exhibits, update the center monument sign designs, and establish new design guidelines that provide guiding principles for commercial and residential development and introduce a Mediterranean design influence. Chapter eighteen point one zero eight of the zoning code would also be amended in its entirety to be more consistent with other code chapters and formatting, create new development standards for D A five, update signage requirements for the commercial and residential uses, and create permitted use tables for the specific plan development areas. Site development standards, such as building setbacks, landscape setbacks, and maximum heights for the existing development areas would not change as part of the project. Development Area five is generally consistent with the regional commercial and mixed-use medium zones. However, the specific plan amendment does include certain standards that would be tailored for the project as shown on the screen. These include changes to the multiple-family parking requirements for one-bedroom units, minimum floor area for one-bedroom units, maximum sign area for in-line tenants, and minor changes to permitted uses throughout the development areas. The proposed amendments to Chapter eighteen point one zero eight would maintain consistency with other specific plan code chapters and are required to implement the proposed project. The amended specific plan document would be more user-friendly and would provide guidelines for future development in the specific plan area. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend city council approval of the specific plan amendment. A final site plan is required for the review of the multiple-family development and associated improvements. The final site plan includes the site plan, floor plans, elevations, and landscape plan to demonstrate compliance with the guiding principles and standards in the specific plan amendment and draft Chapter eighteen point one zero eight. The proposed project meets the development standards proposed under the amended specific plan and therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend city approval of the final site plan. The applicant requests approval of a development agreement. A development agreement is a contract between the city and the property owner that provides certainty to the developer that the approved project will be exempt from future zoning laws. In exchange for that certainty, a development agreement may require the developer to provide benefits to the city beyond what would otherwise be required by existing regulations and ordinances. The property owner is also required to submit annual reports to the city demonstrating compliance with the terms of the agreement. The draft agreement is attached to your report and includes various public benefits, including ten percent moderate-income affordable units, a one hundred thousand dollar contribution to Anaheim Fire and Rescue for fire protection enhancement, and the funding and installation of C C T V and emergency vehicle preemption devices at four intersections along Santa Anna Canyon to enhance emergency response in the vicinity. The development agreement would provide certainty for the developer in exchange for a variety of public benefits. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend city council approval of the development agreement. The city, as the lead agency, prepared an E I R. in accordance with C Q A and the C Q A guidelines. The draft E I R. was presented to the public and the Planning Commission at the July fourteenth workshop. During the forty-five-day public review period, the city received comments from four agencies and organizations, nine individuals, and five commenters at the workshop. Comments and responses have been included in the final E I R. provided as part of the staff report. An E I R. can include up to twenty topics. We identified and the scoping process confirmed that the E I R. would include an analysis of all possible topics. Consistent with C Q A guidelines, the draft E I R. identified that the project would have no effects related to agricultural and forestry resources and mineral resources. That left eighteen topics to be analyzed in the draft E I R. For each topic, the analysis evaluated the level of impact, if any. For the eleven topics shown on the screen, impacts were less than significant. For the six topics shown on this screen, the application of mitigation measures and project design features reduced the impacts to a less-than-significant level. A mitigation monitoring program, or M M P., was prepared for the project to reduce project impacts. The M M P. includes mitigation measures, project design features, and regulatory compliance measures that the project would be required to comply with in order to reduce impacts. Some of those measures have been summarized on this screen and include development obligations for things like submission of a construction-fire prevention plan, wildfire evacuation and awareness plan, and construction management plan. The full list of measures is contained in the mitigation monitoring program included as Attachment one C. to your staff report. As shown on the previous slide, hazards and wildfire impacts for the project are less than significant with mitigation. Based on twenty twenty-five updates to the CAL FIRE hazard maps, eight point two six acres of D A five is located within a very high fire hazard severity zone, which I will refer to as very high fire zone. Very high fire zones are prone to wildfire based on topography, fuels, and weather patterns and are subject to several regulatory requirements to help reduce risk associated with a wildfire event. This designation does not mean that an area is not safe for development. Rather, specific fire protection features that minimize structure vulnerability would be required, and specifically those that are specified in the California Building Code and California Fire Code. The proposed project is located within a developed area, would add new-maintained landscaping, and would be subject to additional building construction standards to harden the building pursuant to the California Building Code. An evacuation time analysis was prepared and determined that the worst-case scenario would involve a fire breaking out in Deer Canyon Preserve located directly to the west of the project site. The evacuation analysis considered the existing condition in the surrounding area and the incremental increase in development with the proposed project. The analysis concluded that the increase that the proposed project would have over the existing shopping center condition with an active cinema use would result in a potential extension of time to evacuate of approximately seven minutes. The project design features and mitigation measures have been incorporated requiring a construction-fire prevention plan, wildfire evacuation and awareness plan, and construction management plan prior to the issuance of construction permits and certificate of occupancy for the multiple-family building. These plans would identify fire safety measures and best practices during construction, would ensure adequate circulation is provided during construction onsite and in the project vicinity, and would provide overall evacuation awareness and emergency community alerts for residents and tenants within the commercial shopping center. The draft E I R. found that the project would result in a significant and unavoidable impact related to transportation, specifically the vehicle miles traveled, or V M T., attributable to the project. The proposed project is located in an area of the city that is a high V M T. generating area. As you can see on this V M T. generating area map from the city's Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines for C Q A, the majority of Anaheim Hills is shown as a higher-generating V M T. area than the Orange County average. This is due to the Anaheim Hills area consisting primarily of residential development with limited proximity to job centers and public transit. The project includes ten percent affordable units and a reduction in the city's parking requirements for multiple-family developments, both of which are identified as V M T. reduction strategies. However, there are no additional V M T. reduction measures that would be feasible for the proposed project that would reduce the V M T. threshold to a less-than-significant impact. The proposed project would continue to provide adequate emergency access to the site through the implementation of the construction and evacuation awareness plans. Even with the implementation of mitigation measures and the project design features, impacts related to transportation would remain significant and unavoidable. Because of the significant and unavoidable impact relating to transportation, a draft findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations has been prepared for the project. This document summarizes the significant impact, describes how it is to be mitigated, and discusses alternatives to the project. The statement of overriding considerations presents the justification for the significant impact related to the project that cannot or has not been mitigated or resolved. It also states that the decision-making body has balanced the benefits of the project against its significant and unavoidable environmental effect and has determined that the benefits for the project outweigh the adverse impacts. And therefore, the adverse impacts are considered to be acceptable. Staff proposes the benefits listed on the screen to override the significant and unavoidable impact relating to transportation. The public review period for the draft E I R. lasted forty-five days and during that time, the city received comments from fourteen agencies and interested parties in addition to the oral testimony from five individuals during the Planning Commission's C Q A workshop. Of the fourteen written comments, three were from state and local agencies, while eleven were from organizations and individuals. All of the comments were reviewed, evaluated, and technical responses were provided in the final E I R. All fourteen comments and associated responses have been documented in the final E I R. Section two. Additionally, the final E I R. includes Section three, which includes clarifications and revisions to the draft E I R. text, tables, and figures generated from responses to comments. These edits are provided to clarify and amplify the draft E I R. And none of the information included in Sections two or three of the final E I R. constitutes significant new information, does not change the analysis or conclusions of the draft E I R., or otherwise raise any issues that triggered a requirement for recirculation of the document under C Q A. In addition to the comments received during the public review of the E I R., staff received letters in support and opposition of the project. Letters received prior to the staff report posting are provided as Attachment twelve to your staff report. Additional letters received prior to this hearing have been printed and provided to each commissioner on the dais. With that, staff recommends that the commission recommend to the city council certification of final E I R. number three fifty-eight and adoption of findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and mitigation monitoring program number three ninety-seven, approval of the proposed amendment to the general plan land use element, and introduction and adoption of ordinances to amend the Anaheim Hills Festival's specific plan number ninety dash one and relevant zoning code Chapter eighteen point one zero eight, and approval of the development agreement. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. One minor disclosure, I forgot I did make a site visit this weekend. Does anybody have questions? No questions, then I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, honorable planning commissioners and Mr. Chair. I'm Sean McCarron, Vice President of Mixed-Use Development at Shea Properties. I'm here tonight with a dedicated team of experts for the Anaheim Hills Festival project. I have ten minutes, so I'm going to be moving quickly, but the team will be here to answer any questions. First off, I'd like to thank staff for their tireless effort on this project. We've worked together for four years to get to this milestone. Next slide. Oh, no, this one's right. Just a brief background on our company and our approach. Shea Properties is a third-generation, family-owned, family-run. We are a real estate development company headquartered right here in Orange County. We are leaders in the development of dynamic mixed-use properties and we develop, own, and manage our properties with a very long-term outlook. The Anaheim Hills Shopping Center was developed in the early nineties. It was state-of-the-industry at the time, a very convenient design, very vehicle-focused, and spread out over a large area. There's been no comprehensive renovation to date. The festival is critical to the region and it's a well-maintained center, but it's an aging center that needs significant reinvestment to meet current tenant and consumer demands. Going back to twenty twenty-one, responding to statewide demand, the city initiated their housing element update prioritizing district equity in housing allocation. Shea Properties responded to the District Six housing needs by submitting a conceptual application. Beginning with that concept plan, the project has always been focused on a comprehensive renovation of the shopping center with the integration of residential. While navigating the application process, we initiated community engagement. Again, beginning in twenty twenty-one, we initiated community engagement with targeted surveys and questionnaires to D six residents, generating twenty thousand views and impressions. A project website was developed, social media accounts created with over twelve thousand unique visitors. We hosted over twenty intimate focus groups with or one-on-one meetings with residents, and we presented at a D six community meeting and we presented to the Ebell Club of Anaheim. Through this engagement process, we built a network of over six hundred stakeholders over four years. We used this list to send out newsletters and updates regarding the project. From the many touchpoints we had with the community, we heard consistent comments and concerns. Early on, we adjusted the project design to account for these. That community input resulted in a better project. We heard that six hundred units was too large for the area and that the community loved the twenty-four-hour fitness. At the time, we were concerned about twenty-four-hour fitness. This was during COVID and twenty-four-hour had declared bankruptcy. But as the market improved, we made the decision to keep twenty-four-hour and we reduced the unit count to four hundred and forty-seven units. I'm happy to report that we've executed a long-term lease extension with twenty-four-hour fitness that includes a renovation of their space, and they've started that already. We heard concerns that the building sections along Festival Drive were too high, so we reduced the height along Festival Drive in key sections. We heard concerns regarding traffic and evacuation and reducing unit count had the single biggest impact on traffic and evac times. Throughout the process, we continued to work closely with the City of Anaheim and Anaheim Fire and Rescue on evacuation planning for D six. The site has a significant grade change between the upper level and the lower level. It currently contains a dated, narrow, and steep connection. That stair connection will be widened to benefit both levels, that's the area shown in red. The circulation at the top of those stairs will be improved for cars and pedestrians, that's the area shown in blue, right at the top adjacent to the red. The new garage will provide parking for retail and residential uses. A new green space will be added with a passive one-acre park and a large enclosed dog park, both of those are shown in purple. These will be public spaces privately maintained. This is redeveloping an already-developed area using existing grades, utilities, and infrastructure. This project, if approved, has many benefits for the community. It revitalizes an aging shopping center. It attracts enticing new tenants. It expands housing options in District Six, supports Anaheim City goals. It entices regional spending, increases the quality of life, and provides community open space and maintains local values. This rendering captures the development. This rendering captures the development from the top of the stairs adjacent to Wood Ranch, looking towards our leasing office, the front door. This is that key connection area that pushes the parking and drive aisles back to where they, from where they currently are, and opens up a generous green space for retail customers, commercial customers, and residents alike to linger while waiting for a table or grabbing a coffee. The contemporary Mediterranean design complements the Anaheim Hills' character and blends nicely with the renovated center. This is a four-story wrap-style project, so the parking structure is concealed, I think Amanda did a nice job of describing that, but we intentionally pushed the parking structure down a level and a half also to reduce height. This is a different angle from the upper deck, looking towards the retail and residential guest entry into the garage. This provides a nice example of the pedestrian connections throughout as well. This rendering is along the facade of Festival Drive, so you're able to see the sections that are stepped down to three levels. Wildfire preparedness and evacuation is critical to this project. We completed a thorough evacuation analysis and fire protection plan with DUDAC that was reviewed and approved by the city and Anaheim Fire and Rescue. The proposed apartment project is taking the place of a vacant 1,880-seat movie theater. We are replacing one intensive use with an alternate use. The new project has specified design features that help in the evacuation procedures. These include resident notification systems to communicate in real-time, new CCTV cameras installed at intersections along Santa Ana Canyon Drive, that would be at Festival Drive, Festival Center, Roosevelt Road, and Weir Canyon, and new emergency vehicle traffic light systems at those same four intersections. And these prioritize emergency vehicles by automatically changing traffic signals when needed. The project will contribute $100,000 to Anaheim Fire and Rescue to help fund local wildlife, wildfire, excuse me, mitigation efforts. During the project construction, the project team will continue coordination with Anaheim Fire and Rescue. The building is designed for wildfire resilience. It's also worth mentioning that vacant buildings tend to attract problems. They tend to present higher risks of emergency. Thank you. This area is impacted by the high volume of vehicles that bypass the 91 freeway during peak commute hours. An extensive traffic analysis and VMT analysis were completed. The project does exceed the city-adopted VMT per-service population threshold, and therefore does create significant unavoidable VMT impact. However, it's important to note that any project exceeding 24 apartment units or 12 single-family homes would have the same significant impact finding. The project's cumulative effect on VMT is less-than-significant, and the project contributes 36 fewer PM peak hour trips and nearly 600 fewer two-way daily trips than an active movie This project has been focused on a comprehensive planning strategy that brings together a renovated shopping center and seamlessly integrates the residential. If the residential moves forward, the entire center will be repaired, repainted, and reinvigorated. It starts with the enhanced connection between the upper and lower level. Plazas on both levels will create gathering and seating areas for the public. There will be improved pedestrian connections throughout the center and enhanced landscaping and lighting. I'd like to give a quick introduction to Vestar. They are the current manager of the festival center. They are here tonight and available to answer any specific retail questions. Vestar is a best-in-class national owner and manager of retail properties, and they bring broad experience in local shopping center renovation and deep historical knowledge of the festival center. And the new project development is what unlocks the funds for a Vestar-led renovation of Anaheim Hills Festival. The specific plan amendment also lays out a long-term vision that includes creating additional modern outdoor dining and unique retail spaces. It also right sizes big-box space with potential for more inline shop space. I'm happy to report that the team has recently negotiated a lease modification with Hobby Lobby that gives back more than 10,000 square feet of space, and that provides the ability to create new inline shops that face the main drive aisle at Festival. Currently, that's a blank facade, it's the back of the Hobby Lobby. And it provides the ability to add limited new retail and restaurant space at the outer pads when the market calls for it. We know what the future looks like at Festival if the project is approved. With the approval comes a significant reinvestment in the center and badly-needed new housing product in District 6. Multifamily projects play a key role in the overall community. They provide an entry point for new residents to put down roots, start families, and send kids to public schools, and eventually move into single-family homes in the neighborhood. And that housing will attract and keep dynamic retail and restaurant tenants. If the project is not approved, the future is less certain. All options come back on the table, and the center will face continued turnover, and it will struggle to keep the quality tenants that the community deserves. We think this is the right project at the right location in Anaheim Hills. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions?
The height of the proposed apartments is 57 feet, correct?
Correct, that's to the top of the stair overruns and the elevator overruns, so that's, that's the height, the highest point, yep.
Okay, and what's the movie theater?
Pardon me?
What's the height of the movie theater?
Oh, 35 feet.
You addressed the traffic. Realized it was 1,880 seats in the theater.
Correct.
I don't know how many trips that would be a day every two hours, but you did address how many it would be for the apartments. Okay. That's all for now, thank you.
Anyone else?
Couple of questions. On the 24-hour fitness, the parking, it was, it was hard to see, could you go back real quick? I just wanted to clarify the parking.
Hard to see the...
On the screen.
Oh, yeah, we can go back. So the, the parking is maintained for the 24-hour and the Tudor time, which is also a really well-liked tenant on that side of the shopping center. So they'll have the surface parking.
So they have the parking all the way around it?
Correct.
How many spots is that?
It's the same ratio, I believe it's at 10 to 1, let me double-check here. Fitness is at 4 to 1, and it's 153 stalls is the information that I have.
Sorry, are you asking how many stalls are remaining in this area?
Yes.
Okay.
What are the...
Around the fitness center, it's 222 parking spaces, there's an additional 30 spaces in between this thin strip here, so total in this area would be three, or sorry, 252.
Right.
Thank you. And then the second question was, I noticed that the entire piece of it was proposed to be rezoned, where it could be developed residential. So that includes the 24-hour fitness that could be torn down and, and made into an apartment building or residential?
So the upper deck was rezoned to mixed-use medium, which allows flexibility, but like I mentioned, we did execute a long-term lease extension with 24-hour, so, yeah, that's, that's our hope, is that they will, they will stay, and we think that a fitness user is really vital to the entire center. That really brings the, the energy and the trips that you need to have a successful center.
Thank you. And how long is that lease? 10 years?
10 years.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Back to the height of the structure. What's the height of the apartments that are across the street?
The apartments across the street and the hotel across the street are three and four stories.
Okay, so your structure is...
Is three stories, but we use the existing grade, which along Festival, in the corner, you drop down more than 10 feet below the, the level of the street, and the senior apartments wrap up the hill above, above the project.
So your structure is at the same level as the senior living apartments, or lower?
Similar, it, it depends on where you are along the, in the senior apartments, but it is at a similar level where in many of the areas, if you're looking out from the first level, you're looking right onto the, kind of right at the fourth level or the roof of the apartment project, but it depends on what point you're at.
But you're not higher than those apartments?
Correct, we're not higher than the apartments, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone? Okay, parking. The way I see parking is that there's four primary areas for parking. There's the retail area, kind of in pink, on whatever slide that is, I don't know. There's the structure, which is blue, you have an extra 30-place parking spots you're adding in green, and the 222 in orange. Now, I see you listed retail, 66 parking spots in the parking structure. Is that for retail and the entire center? And how would they access that? I thought it was resident-only for the parking structure.
Yeah, so the, the surface parking in pink, the 32, those are intended to serve those upper-deck tenants, so the, the Wood Ranch, the First Team Real Estate, the St. Jude Healthcare. So those surface stalls, and then 66 within the parking garage. And then there's some shared parking stalls with the residential guests, so that first level of parking is intended to serve residential guests and retail only, and then we'll have controlled access for the residents that go to the below grade, and then the above, the first level.
So the first level, in addition to the 32, there's 66 additional spots that are potentially usable for the Wood Ranch, which I believe is 65 spots, the medical, which I believe is 66, and the, I think it's a Realtor office.
Yeah, First Team, yep.
I don't remember what the number is for that, but I think it's probably around 40?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So that's 160. Now granted, Wood Ranch would be open at a different hours mostly, except on Saturdays, I would think.
That's correct.
So Saturday, you're going to have Wood Ranch, potentially the medical place, and the Realtor place requiring a lot more than 90 parking spots.
Yeah, I think that they have different, you know, peak demand times, and there's reciprocal use of all the parking at the center, so the green strip that's between the apartment project and the 24-hour, that would also be used by these tenants, as can the parking that is on the lower level.
Parking on the lower level, too? I thought that was resident-only access.
No, I'm sorry, the lower level of the parking center. So the lower level of the parking center...
Oh, lower level, I see what you're saying. So how far is it a walk from the green area? You'd have to go through the park, right?
Yeah, so you would walk through the park. I don't have the exact distance I could, I could find out.
You don't have it by any chance?
I too do not have the exact distance, but we could scale it out.
From the parking structure to those upper-deck tenants is around 200 to 250 feet, depending on which tenant you're heading towards, so if that gives some...
So you're talking maybe 700, 800 feet to the green area, roughly?
Could be, and probably, you know, 150 feet to the lower level.
So, and they can't walk directly there, obviously, because that's your building, correct?
Correct, they'd walk along that Bluff Top Park, so that nice kind of meandering path.
What hours are the leasing office going to be open?
Nine to 5.
And are the leasing spaces going to be available for the retail customers after that?
Yeah, absolutely. So they'll be signed reserved for future resident parking, nine to 5, the, the days that we're open, so it's Monday through Saturday.
Okay, and will guests to the residents and residents be allowed to park in those 32 to 37 spots?
No, they will not.
How are you going to stop that?
Well, you, you police it and enforce it, and you use really obvious signage, and I think most people actually do prefer to park in the building even as a guest, because then your, your covered parking, it does get pretty hot out there. So people will learn to park in the building, and then they have direct access to their friends' units, and they're able to get, you know, buzzed into the unit using their cellphone at the entry points.
Okay, and are you providing notices to tenants that they can't park there?
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, and, and because we, you know, parking at 2.0, I feel that's, that's sufficient, we won't have any parking issues from a residential standpoint at all, so people will be encouraged, and there'll be plenty of space for them to park within the structure as a resident or a guest.
And the 66 spaces in the garage for retail, is that part of the, the joint use, so that the guests could park there as well as the restaurants?
Those ones are, those ones are just for the retail, so the restaurants and the, and the customers.
So there'd be a restriction on tenants parking there as well?
Correct, so that'd be done through signage and enforcement.
I'm skeptical, but, okay. Fire, danger, and getting out, and adding the seven minutes. I add, I understand the 14 versus the seven minutes, and I know that the city determined that that was not significant. Can you explain again what you're doing as far as donating the money, and as far as the cameras, where those are going to be located, et cetera?
Sure, so the $100,000 goes to Anaheim Fire and Rescue for wildfire prevention efforts in D6, in that area. We will be adding a tenant notification system, which we'll be working with Anaheim Fire to design that, make sure it accomplishes their goals, but we believe it'll be a, a text-based system that goes from the management company to the residents when there's an event, and then they'll communicate some information, but most importantly, they communicate the information of where to get proper evacuation instructions. So it's not the management company telling everyone what to do, it's the management company saying that there's an event, and you need to tune in and listen to CAL FIRE, OCFA, Anaheim Fire and Rescue. The CCTV cameras, four locations, the ones immediately around the center along Festival Drive, and those will be the same locations that have the EVP, the Emergency Vehicle Preemption Systems.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further questions. Any follow-up?
How many trips were folded into the evacuation model?
We do have our consultant here as well, maybe that would be helpful for...
Stephen Cook with Intersectioning Metrics, we did the fire evacuation analysis. For the, there's a couple of different models that we ran, so for NO project, it was 11,249 trips. For the WITH project, it was 12,053 trips, and for the WITH cinema, so if we assume the cinema would stay in place and not the project, it was 11,664, sorry, 64 trips.
So the seven minutes you're adding is with your project. What was it with the theater? What would it have been with the theater?
So the, our project from, from NO project to our project, it's 14 minutes. If the theater stayed in place, it would be seven additional minutes. The difference between the twos is where the seven comes from.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, sorry. Oh, I have a question. So are you assuming the theater is full with, what, 1,800 people the entire, the entire time, or...
During, during evacuation, we, it's more based on the parking that would be at the theater itself, because the, the number of people doesn't necessarily matter, it depends on how many people were there. So we more look at parking spaces and assumed, I'd have to, I could, I could get you an answer, I'd have to dig through the report, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but we don't assume, we do assume full occupancy generally as a worst-case condition.
So you're assuming that the theater's full all the time?
The parking lot is full. So it's not full all the time. We look at worst-case scenarios, so we look at PM peaks, like during the PM peak hour, during the commute hour, when the traffic's the highest and people are at home. We also look at a late-night peak where everybody's at home and everybody would have to evacuate their home all at the same time, they wouldn't be out at their job or something like that. So we really do look at the, at the actual peak hours of when it would be the worst-case scenario. And the theater kind of aligns well with, with residential as far as peak hour goes, because people go to the theaters at night, people are at home at night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna, I know we have cards on this one, right? Okay, so I'll let you start.
Can I sit down?
Yeah, just go ahead and sit down, sorry, thank you. You're Chase?
All right.
Are you Chase?
Chase, no, I'm Robert.
No, you're Robert. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Awesome. All right, hello, Commission, thank you so much for taking the time to give us some public discussion. So my name's Robert Etsenhouser, I'm a resident of Anaheim Hills in District 6, as well as a college student, and I'm speaking in support of the project. I believe that any new housing allocations are very important, and I think that for this project specifically, the plans that have been put into place, this is a great opportunity for District 6 to get that additional housing allocation we need as a part of our arena allocation, as well as just to address the affordable housing crisis in our state as a whole. You know, I'm in college right now, I'm living with my parents, but in the future, you know, if I want to be able to continue to live and work in our city, there needs to be more housing units in order for us to address our low supply, which is why our housing costs are so high at this time. And so I believe this project not only is going to increase the supply, allow for a long-term positive impact on our housing supply in the city and in Anaheim Hills specifically, but I think that compared to other projects in the area that have been proposed, this one is a really good one, just given the fact that this is already currently developed as a essentially vacant commercial area. So I think that that makes it a pretty smart use of land there. And overall, I think that additionally, all the, the developer made very good points, I believe, when it comes to, you know, wildfire mitigation. I know that obviously, that's a pretty big concern with residents of District 6 specifically. Just, I know a lot of you probably were here during like the Freeway Complex fire back in 2008. I lived in Irvine back in 2020 when the Silverado fire happened, so obviously, having adequate evacuation areas is important, but I believe that the plans that have been submitted do adequately, adequately address that and will make sure that any residents are able to evacuate safely as well as people in the festival center itself. And I also believe that the changes being made to the festival center itself will help to increase business to the area and keep the center going. Obviously, there's times now when it feels like the center kind of needs a little bit of that burst of life, so I think that this project would really do that. And that concludes my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chase, and if Andrew could come to the aisle and prepare?
Good evening. My name is Chase Preciado from Lazo Jury LLP. I am speaking on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility or SAFER. SAFER requests that the Commission deny approval of the FEIR for the Anaheim Hills Festival Specific Plan Amendment Project. The Commission should instead require preparation of a revised EIR. Under CEQA, a revised EIR is required because the FEIR fails as an informational document because some of its mitigation measures are deficient and the FEIR failed to analyze the project's indoor air quality impacts. First, for the project's fire and evacuation safety impacts, the FEIR's mitigation measures include the formulation of plans for construction fire prevention, wildfire and construction management, all before project construction. However, these, these measures constitute deferred mitigation, which is prohibited under CEQA since the plans will not be created until after project approval. The FEIR also failed to provide quantitative evidence of the effectiveness of these mitigation measures. Likewise, for the project's soil stability impacts, the FEIR relied on deferred mitigation by deferring the city's review of the project plans for compliance with a geotechnical exploration and feasibility report until the issuance of grading and building permits. The city's review must be conducted before project approval. Furthermore, for the project's significant and unavoidable transportation impacts, the FEIR failed to include all feasible mitigation measures to reduce these impacts. Additionally, industrial hygienist Francis Offerman concluded that the project will significantly impact indoor air quality. The project's long-term indoor emissions of formaldehyde gas, a known carcinogen, will expose its future residents to a cancer risk of 120 per million, exceeding the CEQA's significance threshold of 10 per million. The FEIR did not address this impact. For the reasons I have discussed here and in SAFER's written comments, we again ask that you deny approval of the FEIR and require preparation of a revised EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug?
Excuse me, sir?
Chase.
Chase? Your organization, did you guys submit a notification to the city during the, the review period?
We submitted comments, yes.
During the review period?
Yes.
And where they responded to?
I would, I don't have the answer to that. I can get back to you after the meeting with that.
Okay, all right, we're good, thank you.
Doug, you're up, Andrew, if you could come down?
Yeah, good evening, my name's Doug Robbins, I live at 8141 East Kennedy Road, I live right behind the festival shopping center and those homes. My family's lived up there.
I'm sorry, sir, your, your name is not Doug Robbins?
It is Douglas Robbins.
Okay, very good, I wanted to make sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I live, huh? Yeah, and I live right behind the, the Anaheim Hills Festival Shopping Center. We lived there for 39 years. I usually don't oppose development in the area, but it's got to be done with safety, with public safety in mind. And the risk here is fire safety. So the infrastructure, the infrastructure in the area is not adequate to evacuate the homes already there, let alone any additional homes. Last year, Salt Creek proposed a project similar in size, I think it was 50 units more. Your EIR showed a three-hour evacuation time. Three hours. Now, we'll talk about their stuff in a minute, what they said, but this area is also in a high, a very high fire risk area, which they showed on the, the presentation. In the fall, we get San Ana winds that come whistling through that canyon from 30 to 50 miles an hour. This is when we have the fire problems. We don't have the problems with fire any other time. That's when it happens, and a fire always breaks out during this wind condition. It, it blows uncontrollably, the firefighters, as good as they are, bless their heart, they cannot control fire in 50 mile an hour winds. We saw what happened last year in Eaton and Palisades. They cannot control it. Same happens here. We've had a couple of very bad events in the area where we were gridlocked, could not evacuate, and that was years ago. The traffic has only got worse. Now people line up along this, on all our evacuation routes to get through the 91 because the traffic is so bad, no infrastructure's been done there either, other than the fast track, but that did little to mitigate that. So, so we've already got these roads clogged, three-hour evacuation time, throw in a fire, how, how fast does that move at 50 mile an hour winds? You think I have, we have three hours? It came all the, in one afternoon, it came from, in the Kennedy Hill fire, Canyon Two fire, it came all the way from Corona in a matter, matter of like three or four hours and burned our area. So I don't understand how an additional, I say on conservative, maybe a thousand cars for this proposed thing, with, I think that's conservative too, especially with two cars per unit and the.
I'm sorry, sir, your time's up, I gave you about five more seconds due to my interruption. I'm sorry, sir, you, you're gonna have to leave the dais. Andrew?
Yes.
And will Peter come down to the aisle? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Winger, and my family lives at the top of the hills, kind of where Serrano and Knoll Ranch Road connect. We've been evacuated two times since living there, and it is an extremely traumatic experience, and that's what keeps going through my mind as we see these proposals. This, this project is nearly identical in scope and size to the Deer Canyon project that was rejected because of the fire danger. There was overwhelming community out, people coming out and talking about it, the fire department was completely against it, and I just don't see how this is any different than that project that was just a stone's throw away from Deer Canyon. In the EIR for that, they had a three-hour evacuation time without the project being implemented. So right now, if we go by, by that report, we're looking at three hours to evacuate, and that project added another 24 minutes. There's absolutely no way this one's just a seven-minute thing, and, and that's not even the issue. The issue is the three hours that we're dealing with. They're adding 1,000 more cars, it, it just, it makes absolutely no sense. We really need to put some sort of a moratorium on all the large-scale building projects in the nearby area until significant infrastructure improvements are made to reduce the evacuation times. At this point, none have been made or proposed. That's the issue. Fix the roads, fix the evacuation before you build anything else. After that point, I don't care, build this thing, it looks great, just not with the fire danger. They lean on this know-your-way, that's the most utopian view of fire evacuation I've ever seen in my life. Like, all bets are out when the fire starts, people go crazy, and I, I just, you, you can't lean on this project, it's on the know-your-way at all. Furthermore, this project that we were just looking at seemed to look at this project in its own little bubble and not looking at the entire area and consider the fire risk for that. You're like, oh, well, this, we've mitigated everything on this property, so we're fine. Who cares if the people at the top of the hill can't get out and end up burning? That seems ridiculous. And they also talk about the high vehicle traffic. That's just adding on to the whole fire risk. This whole thing just, there's a lot missing in the reports that were presented, and I really hope you guys send it back to be reconsidered because three hours is unacceptable for the evacuation time. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes, thank you Chairperson, Vice Chairperson and Commissioners. I'm here to be against this project. It's a great city of Anaheim here. This project is in East Anaheim. We try to do our part, but the project on that map is all the way by the green spot. I can't tell you how nervous I was in 2008, 2017. I don't want it to happen to our community. Just want to let you know that. As you know, CAL FIRE has deemed this a high-fire zone. To me, dangerous. Obviously, safety is an issue, know your way. I don't know what you're talking about. I just have a lot of red flags on this project, and just want you to realize that the community around us doesn't want it, but we like to do our part. Appreciate your time.
There's a question I have. Do they have a secure lease for the Wood Ranch Providence going forward, or do they have any type of leasing agreement?
Usually, you're not allowed to ask questions when you're making your statement.
Okay, thank you, I do appreciate, no, I appreciate, I'm just curious, I, because I, it's great that they have the gym, but, you know, Providence is a great facility for the community. A lot of people go there. I appreciate your time, if you have any questions, it's for me.
We're not allowed to do that, sure.
I appreciate that, I do, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you understand his question?
I think perhaps maybe at the end, the applicant or the commercial property manager, Vestar, can come up and answer additional questions about the retail portion.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hill? And could Dan come? Never mind, Dan's there.
Chairman Walker, Planning Commissioners, thank you for having us out here today. I've been here before, my concerns are still the same. You are planning to build a dense housing project, or proposing to, in an already higher, high-fire danger area that already has announced traffic issues. The last time I had to evacuate my home, which was the second time, it took me 40 minutes to just drive the 200 yards from my home to San Ana Canyon, and then another 90 minutes to go four miles to evacuate that area. Since then, there have been more developments and more traffic. It is my belief that as elected or appointed officials, your number one job is to protect its constituents. Putting high-density housing in an area that is already high-fire prone is irresponsible. You put not only current residents at risk, but also future residents. The solution is additional evacuation routes. Seven minutes, 14 minutes, it's ridiculous. Takes hours to get out of there. What we need is another way out. I've mentioned this before, a bridge at Fairmont, an overpass at Fairmont gives us another way to get out of that area. There should be no further developments in East Anaheim until we have another way out. That would be the logical solution. All of these proposals should be put aside until we have that other way out. Otherwise, you're putting us all at, at high risk. Please consider this, not only for this project, but future projects. No more building in East Anaheim until we have another way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And, go ahead, Dan, and John, looks like you're lined up already.
Well, thank you very much, members of the Commission, for giving us the opportunity to speak up, and I want to also thank the folks from the festival project for their presentation. You did address what our concern is. You did address the fire hazard. I've a resident of Anaheim, been here for 22 years, actually 25 years now I think about it. And some of the things that are being proposed for this project are positive, but the number one issue is safety, and that really trumps everything. Our insurance companies, if you contact any of the insurance companies that insure property in this area, they'll confirm the fact that this is a high-fire hazard area. So that's got to be our consideration. Now, I, I liked a lot of the things that have been presented today about this project, but I have to say that the idea that this would only add seven minutes to the evacuation is not realistic. The people that live here have been through many evacuations in the past, and as our, the previous speakers have mentioned, it takes hours to get out of here. And so it's, we have to consider that. Now, I have tremendous respect for the fire department, Anaheim Fire Department in particular, our fire chief. I, I'd like to hear his, his opinion as to how much he thinks this would, this project would add to the evacuation. I, I go, I would go along with whatever he says. So thank you very much for the opportunity to oppose this, and I, I leave this up to you folks who I'm sure will be looking mainly for the safety of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yes, my name's John Gillespie. I, I've been a resident here for 34 years in Anaheim Hills. I, I appreciate your time, you've been here a couple of hours, and particularly with this proposal, is more than just the development and the help of the businesses, I've been very impressed with Shea Building. However, you've got five plan amendments. It says, following the approval of the amendments, the design and layout is, will be consistent. I, that's one problem. The other problem I have is they're a $100,000 donation, but they're exempt from future zoning changes? That's pretty dangerous, frankly. And the last, there are 447 multiple-family residential union, units. What's, what's the increase in our population? If you multiply that times. If you multiply that times two, which there would be more than just two people in each of those apartments, increases the population substantially. And with that, you sandwich the apartments between a residential area and behind them, a senior development. I'm trying to be kind here. So my, my question is, has any assessment been given by the police to the increase in crime that this may present? Those are, those are the two questions primarily. One, one last, actually. The proposed project, it says generally located along the south side of Santa Ana Canyon Road, generally located. I, I just wanted to know if there's anything else contemplated along with this project? That's all I have to say. And again, I, I know there's been a lot thrown at you this evening with this project and thank you for your time.
Sir, can you say your name again? And have you turned in a yellow card?
I did turn in the yellow card. My name is John Gillespie.
Okay, thank you. I gathered that after he said his name.
Here's the really good news. I'm going to be very, very brief. I'm going to invite you guys over to my house. How about coming on over from three to seven on a weekday? Come on, I'll make coffee, all right? Seriously, we'll all sit down. And this gentleman right here can come also. And take a look at the traffic around our surrounding area. It is literally a parking lot. I live right behind this proposed development. If you put this development in here, nobody's going anywhere during rush hour. So please, I'm just asking you, consider that. I will also layer on the fact that fires, oh my God, I just can't imagine what would happen if you had a fire in the middle of the rush hour time. You guys are not going anywhere, trust me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't forget, I'll make coffee. Stop by.
Karen is next, followed by Robert.
Yes, good evening, Karen Hager. I'm a current resident at the 55 plus senior community called The Overlook. It is literally across the street from the proposed site, literally across the street from Festival Drive, from the 24 hour fitness. Yeah, traffic, ditto on all of that. Traffic impact for sure. Santa Ana Canyon is already impacted. There's two lanes each direction and I've sat through many traffic signals waiting for my turn to get through the intersection and that's just rush hour. Santa Ana Canyon, as we know, runs parallel with the 91 freeway and it's heavily traveled instead of the, the 91 freeway. Where Canyon is also impacted with lots of traffic trying to get onto the 91 freeway all hours of, of the day as well. My concern certainly is the fire risk. Where I live at The Overlook, there is the, the power lines that do go up the hill and if there's a fire that breaks out there, that's certainly a concern specifically to The Overlook as well as to the residents there. Adding another 447 multi-family unit dwelling there certainly adds to the risk of evaluation, excuse me, evacuation time as well as people. There is no public transportation on that end of town. It is definitely very heavily car oriented and having other vehicles and certainly there presents more of an evacuation problem as well. So I appreciate all the information. It's still a huge concern of mine for safety, public safety and emergency time. Don't know if there's any additional fire resources that are going to be taken care of as well. Yes, the Fire Department does a great job. They are at The, The Overlook frequently and I'm sure they do a great job. My concern is time and the evacuation and how that's going to be handled moving forward if this goes through. I ask that this plan is actually not gone through and certainly lots of others have voiced their opinion as well. Thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity to share my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert, followed by Elizabeth.
Yeah, my name's Robert Kamier. I want to thank the Commission for their time served tonight. I live with my wife and my family just above Festival Center. And on a personal note, it may not mean much to most, but we purchased this home. We've lived in Anaheim Hills for over 30 years. We purchased this home in this specific location primarily because of the view that we have, okay? And a seven, six story garage right above my house or below my house, I really do not look forward to looking at, all right? And besides that, I believe that this project, if it goes through, will actually diminish the value of many homes in the area. On a more serious note than that, a lot of it's already been addressed here is, and I know how these studies work with the traffic and the evacuation and so forth, and I can tell you this, they are not accurate by far. And you've already heard it here tonight. We've also been through at least two evacuations in our area and we live right above the Festival Center and it still took us over two hours to evacuate. Two hours. Seven minutes more, not going to happen. It's not realistic, all right? And then also as far as the traffic is concerned, just on a normal basis today, especially at five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock, with all the traffic that goes to the 91 freeway and the surrounding areas, it's already a nightmare just to get to the 91 or the surrounding intersections. This would only make it that much more worse, all right? And I don't, I think it's been addressed already once before, but years ago, they put a new project, a multifamily housing project over at Savvy Ranch, which was, again, I believe was probably, I don't know for a fact, but probably rezoned and it was a multifamily residence, apartment buildings or condos, I'm not real sure. The crime rate has skyrocketed in that area. We get reports through our Anaheim buzz all the time about drug use, crimes, break-ins specifically contributed to that multifamily complex. And I believe the same thing is going to happen here. Biggest question is, is if, we all know that a similar project was presented a short time ago and it did not pass. It failed. What's different today? What's different about this one than the prior ones that wanted to do the same similar thing in this area? From what I could hear, nothing. Now, I know that the management, the owners of the festival theater area-
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Want to fill that-
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Elizabeth?
Yes, good.
Followed by Byron.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Hansberg. That's supposed to be an S. Sorry, I need to work on my penmanship. I am here to remind you of the first speaker, the young man who is currently a college student who's living at home with his parents and when he finishes college, I guarantee you, he will no longer want to stay at home and live with his parents. He is going to want more housing options and that is what this project brings. This project brings a new form of more diverse housing to Anaheim Hills, predominantly a single family area. This would create new opportunities for new household formation, young people moving out of their parents' home, getting their first apartment with a roommate, with their life partner, starting their lives. And currently, there is not a lot of this type of housing available in District Six. The median home price is around 1.2 to 1.5 million. It is not an area that is accessible to middle income people, young families just starting out. And so that benefit of diversifying the housing stock in District Six is the biggest benefit that this project brings. But it also brings green space, pedestrian connectivity and new retail and restaurant opportunities to revitalize the center. Earlier, your planning staff made reference to the fact that the, the plan has been amended five times. Yes, because cities are not fixed in amber. They are organic, living, breathing organisms that need to evolve and change for new economic conditions, new population conditions. And so to go forward with an amendment makes a lot of sense because so much has changed since 1990. We didn't shop online, you know, housing costs and wages were much more in alignment. People moved more than they do now. The fact that there isn't a lot of churn in the market means that we need to build more housing. So this project is actually a wonderful opportunity and I'm going to conclude there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brian? Followed by John. Oh, I think John's already gone, hasn't he? The other John, Gillespie, will be next. Oh, John Gillespie already went, sorry, John. Mozzarella, there we go. Go ahead, thank you, sorry.
That's all right. Good evening. My name is Brian Farkas. I'm a member of the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area, live, work and recreate in the vicinity of this project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city, the city should require the project be built with contractors that hire locally, pay prevailing wages and utilize apprentices from state certified apprenticeship training programs. Workforce requirements, reduce construction related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a 2020 report titled, Putting California on a High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030, the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast, the South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollution reductions. Recently, the state of California reiterated, reiterated the commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Road Jobs Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill 2011, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting criteria or meeting certain citing affordability and development standards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, sir.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone. I just want to say thank you for this public comment and I was here in July and just echo what I said then is that I think your primary purpose should be do no harm. And I was echoing the public safety aspect is that the evacuation, I don't even know what I'm going to do during evacuation because it's three hours and to add more traffic is going to make a horrible situation worse. My personal evacuation plan, I think I'm going to just go to 24 hour fitness and jump in the pool because I, I'm not going to burn up in my car three hours trying to get out on Santa Ana Canyon. The other thing, Chairman Walker, I think you were very justified in saying you're skeptical about the parking. I don't think there's enough parking. I think it'll choke off a very successful business in Wood Ranch. It might affect the other businesses and that may be the long-term plan for the, for the developer. I don't know, but it, there's not enough parking. And finally, it's just been a theater and environmentally, it's shown that commercially that is better for the environment. It could be something else. In the same shopping center, there was a Steymart, it was subdivided and now it's very thriving. Nordstrom Rack and also Ulta. There's a, it's placed on Santa Ana Canyon in place of Big Lots, there's going to be a Trader Joe's, which I think is, is great. 20 years ago, there was a Super Kmart down in Anaheim Hills in Savvy Ranch. That's a Home Depot that's thriving. That's the largest Home Depot west of the Mississippi. So this same commercial spot could be repurposed for something and that's jobs and that will help the area. But primarily, the number one issue is safety. There's going to be a catastrophe and it's just going to make a horrible situation worse. So thank you very much and please vote no against this proposal.
Mark? Followed by Mr. Price. I think it's Mr., sorry if it's not.
Yes, good evening. My name's Mark Fertezzo. I live at 316 Basil Street. I live right above the Fiesta Mall area. We can walk to that from our house. My main thing is safety. I do not want this here. It can be used as something else. We've been out there approximately 39 plus years. I remember getting off at Weird Canyon, was basically a one-way street going up to Montevista, dead end there, and there was nothing else there but the development of the two or three homes phases at that time. I've seen three fires come through the canyon, all from the winds, going from, from Corona area through the canyon up to Anaheim, Yorba Landiside. The last two, we could not get out of our house. We walked to the, I think I got to Ralph's Market at one time and to the 24 hour fitness. We could not drive, we could not walk for two and a half to three hours. I left both my girls and my granddaughter the last time. I couldn't get back to my house. They could not leave our house. What I'm, what I just want, safety wise, wherever they cut their, their information about time, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. And I think we need to look beyond our Anaheim-Yorba Landiside, look east, Corona, Norco, Riverside, the Empire out there. It's all the traffic coming through our corridor. We're the last off ramp and on ramp east and westbound. If there's something that goes on between those hours with a rush or even prior to that, we are limited, very limited. My backyard, I look at the fire station on, on, on the street there. They could not get out enough and they couldn't get back into the last fire. And I, basically, there's just not enough access, Santa Ana Canyon, La Palma, even Orange County going east to west. It is a bottleneck with all the traffic because we're being influenced so much with the Empire now with the traffic coming in. I used to get on the freeway at 3:45 in the morning, AM, Monday through Friday, going west to Anaheim to work. If you've ever been on the freeway that time in the morning, you'd think it'd be kind of wide open? No. Everybody's coming into Orange County, going to LA for their jobs. And what happens later in the afternoon? Everybody's going east, going back home. And if there's any kind of a predicament with fire or emergency time, it's not going to happen. It's going to get worse. And I feel for people in our area that have been established out there. We're very, very fortunate, beautiful area. The, the Fiesta's done great. Yes, it needs to be upgraded. There is other things can be brought in and I hope that can be done instead of building this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I believe it's G. Price? I wasn't a Mr., I apologize.
No worries. I'm going to start tonight with a quote from Chief Russell. Fire evacuation will always be a problem in Anaheim Hills. Let those words echo in your heads as we think about the lives that were lost in the fires in January. I'm going to concentrate on the flaws of Attachment 11 evacuation times and I've provided you with a packet to follow along. Page six, and this is a quote, "The most likely worst case scenario was determined to be a fire in Deer Canyon Park. In the event the fire were to ignite in the area, an evacuation would likely occur in the city's know your way zones four and eight. In the event of a fire in Deer Canyon, land uses to the west, including zones nine, 10, 11 and 13, would also be evacuated. The evacuating vehicles associated with those land uses would travel west on Santa Ana Canyon Road. Therefore, the vehicles associated with zones nine, 10, 11 and 13 are not considered in the evacuation time." Let's look at the fairy tale of know your way and zones nine, 10, 11 and 13 and the exact directions residents are given. Zone nine, according to know your way, evacuates east on Santa Ana Canyon to Weir. Zone 10 evacuates east on Santa Ana Canyon to Weir. Zone 11 evacuates east on Santa Ana Canyon to Weir. Zone 13, they're the lucky ones, they get a choice, they can go either east or west. All of the vehicles going east from these four zones are not included in the evacuation time. Thousands of homes, thousands of cars are not counted. Page 12 of the attachment looks at future development that could possibly add time to the evacuation. One project evaluated was the Builders Remedy Hills Preserve. Their study determined that it would have no impact- Their study determined that it would have no impact. That's zero minutes to the evacuation time because they're going to use a different route. That project, just like this project, is in Zone 8. And again, according to Know Your Way, you know which way they're going. That's 700 more vehicles being evacuated east on Santa Ana Canyon Road. And they're not counted again, just like 9, 10, and 11, all not counted. It is only through this manipulation of the number of vehicles going east that the city can determine an increase of seven minutes. They are controlling the numbers to control the result. To add any amount of time to an evacuation route is unacceptable. You're putting people at risk. Would seven minutes make the difference between life or death? Because again, Chief Russell said, "Fire evacuation will always be a problem."
Does anyone else wish to speak? Will the proponent come up and rebut?
I'll address a few items, and I'll hand off to our attorney and then also some of the consultants. You know, I hear their concerns, and I think I'd like to point out that this is importantly one of the only likely viable housing projects in District 6. What makes this project different is that it's replacing a large intensive use that's already there. The traffic challenges that are a result of the 91 and the in-place improvements that need to be done are not the responsibility of the project. There was a comment related to increased crime and property values being reduced. That's something that we sometimes hear, and it's a clear misplaced concern. There's a lot of data that backs up that multifamily projects do not decrease local values of homes. In fact, these residents will be making significant household incomes. They'll be spending in the community. They'll be raising young families, and they'll be the ones purchasing homes in the neighborhood once they move out of those apartments. So I would like to pass off to our attorney. He's going to discuss the comment made by the Safer Group.
Good evening, Chairman Walker and Honorable Planning Commissioners. My name is Andrew Fogg. I'm an attorney with Cox Castle Nicholson. And to respond to Commissioner Lieberman's question, Safer did submit a comment letter during the comment period, and that was responded to fully. However, they submitted a new comment letter today, and that raises an issue they did not raise previously. So everything that was submitted earlier has been responded to, but I did want to address his comment regarding indoor air quality, specifically Mr. Offerman's claims regarding formaldehyde. I would start off by saying, just simply, this is a bad faith letter. This letter is literally basically a complete duplicate of a letter they've submitted dozens of times throughout the state on a myriad of projects. It's fundamentally flawed, but there's no reason they couldn't have submitted it in the comment period. The fact that they submitted it on the eve of the hearing, it's just demonstration of bad faith. There's a lot of technical information, so I apologize that we have to respond in oral testimony as opposed to in writing. First of all, indoor air quality of a project is not a CEQA impact. CEQA looks at the impacts of the project on the environment. It does not look at the impacts of the project on the project. That's part of the project. And there's case law on this. There's a case, Shattuck Neighbors versus Berkeley City Council. It's a 2013 case. The citation is 222 Cal App 4, 768. It is what it is. I just put that in there for the record. The study that Mr. Offerman is citing is fundamentally flawed, it's outdated, and at the end of the day, it is not substantial evidence that you can rely on, and I'll explain why. Dr. Offerman assumes that these materials, these buildings will be used typical construction materials and methods, typical materials. He bases this work on a 2009 study written by, guess who, himself? And he ignores, he cites but ignores later studies that showed a 33% decrease in formaldehyde emissions compared to the study he came up with in 2009. He just ignores that data. He also makes several assumptions that are quite absurd. First of all, he assumes that residents will be in these units 24 hours a day, 52 weeks a year, for 70 years with the windows and doors closed in a box. I don't know how many of us will stay in a windowless, doorless, closed box for 70 years, but that's the assumption he bases his numbers on. So it's just ridiculous. Secondly, he assumes that there will be continuous offgassing of formaldehyde for that entire 70-year period at the same rate. Now, we've all bought products from IKEA or whatever. You open up the box, and it's got a smell to it, and some of that is formaldehyde. There is no doubt that that is the case. And he, his own study admits that what he's citing are things from construction materials and new furniture and stuff that you bring into your house. That's what he's citing. You open the box, and you smell the chemicals, and you, ugh. What happens? They dissipate, and they stop releasing because there's only so much of these materials in these things that we bring into our homes. And there's a study that's available on the Center for Disease Control website, still sitting there today, Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry Registry. If you Google "formaldehyde in your home, what you need to know," this official study, it says virtually all gases from these types of materials dissipate completely within two years. So again, his study is just not substantial evidence that you can rely on. It also ignores changes in building codes. His study is based on products that were constructed before various indoor air quality standards were adopted. He's looking at things that were in 2009. That's more than two building code cycles since then. We have indoor air quality standards that have improved. We have building code standards. We have Title 24. We have the Green Building Code. We have the Energy Code. All of these have been updated. They get updated every three years. He's looking at things that are 15, 16 years ago that several cycles passed at this point. He's not looking at current data, and those studies have shown that there's been at least a 44% decrease in just the standard emissions that exist from that time to now, just based on these changes in codes. So respectfully, this is just not information that is valid information upon which you can make an informed decision. We will submit a written comment responding, but I wanted you to have this information. Again, I apologize for the length, but it's a letter we've seen many, many times. I'm available for any questions, and I think we might have some additional speakers.
I would like to introduce Lisa Meyer with DUDAC. They put together the evacuation plan. Some of the comments that were related to methodology, those may need to be answered by the city, but DUDAC can address some of the other concerns.
Thank you. So my name is Lisa Meyer. I'm a wildfire planner with DUDAC. I helped prepare the evacuation study. To help address some of our comments, I'm going to take a quick breath. To help address some of our comments, I wanted to start by addressing the number of comments regarding the time, addition of time that the project would make. So we're, our study shows a 14-minute increase between the existing condition and our with project condition. The seven minutes, I think the commission is aware, comes from the difference between the cinema, with cinema project and the project itself, or sorry, with the cinema condition and the project itself. So our project only accounts for 10% of the traffic within our study area. So that may be why some folks feel that number is low. Also, our, in our study area, our project is kind of at the end of the evacuation network, right where everything gets punched up right next to the freeway. And so the total evacuation time is impacted by the location of the project, and it's next to the freeway. And then also another fact is that for the study, most of the traffic within the study area is coming from the north and west, whereas our project is coming from the east. And so there isn't as much conflict from our project until we get closer to that Santa Ana Canyon, Weir Canyon intersection. Also wanted to note that our project, because it, as mentioned earlier, because it is being built in a very high fire hazard severity zone, will be required to comply with the latest California Fire and California Building Codes for development within a very high fire, for development within a very high fire hazard severity zone. And all of those requirements will create a very hardened set of structures. And then also with regards to Know Your Way, our study takes into account how traffic would flow based on our communications with both police and fire. That's what I have. Any other questions? Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just had one more rebuttal related to the comment on the six-story garage. So the six-story garage is pushed down two levels, so it is four levels. It's even with the rest of the apartment project, the wood frame portion.
I thought it was a level and a half.
I would call it a five-and-a-half-level garage, pushed down a level and a half, but there's a major step in the building, so you could call it six and two or five and a half and one and a half.
Okay.
Either way, it's flush at the top with the four-story wood frame. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anyone have questions for staff or?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just asking if we have an assessment by fire department.
They did review the evacuation analysis and the fire prevention plans that were submitted as part of the technical studies for the EIR. We do have the fire chief and fire marshal here as well to answer any specific questions.
What's their findings?
I think he left. Oh, no, he didn't leave.
Thank you very much. I have Fire Marshal Lindsay Young with me as well, in case there's some technical questions that she's much more versed to answer than me. And I'm sorry, I was standing outside. What was the question that you had, sir?
Yes, I'm asking about, did you do any assessment for this project?
So that's a technical question?
Yes, the community risk reduction team was engaged in the development review process along with the planning department, and we did have the opportunity to review some of these studies as they were coming across our desk to make sure that they were able to conform with all the basic code requirements.
That means there is no issue with the vacation time and stuff like that, yeah, right?
Yeah, it means that it meets all the minimum requirements as identified through the California Fire Code. There is no specific time that is required or that we can turn to in terms of what is a minimum, maximum evacuation time. But in terms of the project itself and the construction access and all of that, it does meet minimum code requirements.
Thank you.
I have a question for, thank you for coming, both of you, for the chief. So were you here? Were you in your current position in the 2008 and 2017 fires?
I was here for both of those fires. I was not in my current position, but I ran both those fires.
Okay. And what was your experience with the evacuation times at that area of Anaheim Hills? We're hearing horror stories of two or three hours. Is that consistent with what you saw?
Yeah, so probably the best one that we can refer back to was the evacuations on the Canyon 2 fire, which that fire started and moved from basically the Corona-Anaheim line west under a significant Santa Ana wind push. Ironically, we weren't in a red flag warning that day, but we still had 40, 45 mile sustained winds. Fire moved very aggressively. Evacuations were ordered, and there were some challenges and problems with the evacuation plans that we had. Every incident of magnitude, you learn, and you train, and you develop to make, you know, safer for the citizens for the next one, and that was probably one of our biggest takeaways of that fire. We had a lot of successes on that fire. We did unfortunately lose some residents. We had no fatalities. Thank the Lord for that. But we did, we did, you know, lose some structures, but we did learn a lot. Some contracts with our neighbors, with Cal Fire and the Forest Service were strengthened, which allows us aerial assets as well as resources. But to your question, probably the best takeaway from that was the collaboration between fire, police, CHP, Caltrans, City of Orange on a better evacuation plan. I have to say, on evacuation plans, it's, we have to keep in mind is they are never going to go smooth. They're never going to go perfect, and they have to have some flexibility in them because based on what the fire environment is doing, time of day, multiple things, you have to be able to change that evacuation plan as fluidly and safely as you can. I also have to say that Anaheim Police did an outstanding job on making the best decisions they could under the conditions they had without a playbook to refer to, to go to. We've cleaned up some of those things. We don't push vehicles into Orange, and as the fire is impacting Orange, they're pushing them into Anaheim. The signal preemptions and some of the things that you learned about so we have better control of the signals to move traffic, having CHP and Caltrans and all of our city departments in the plan, I'm confident it will go better. I'm confident that we have a good plan. I can't say it's going to be perfect. I can't say there's not going to be frustrations, but you have to have a plan to build from. And then you make that plan better as you see it executed and as you learn and as things change, just like anything else. Very long question or answer, sorry.
That's okay. Do you still think it's like a two-to-three-hour evacuation time again? Could it be that long again?
I don't know because I'm not a traffic engineer and where those studies come from, and I don't want to get into and give an opinion on something that I'm not trained to do. I have to say, in fairness to this project, like all of them, now that I'm on a roll here, I might as well keep going, that I think it's only fair that we evaluate that project on its own merits and not the totality of that. And I also have to say, what hazards and what risks a policy group, they give me, my job is to mitigate or avoid or minimize those risks as much as possible. Whenever you add vehicles or increase the density of population anyplace in the city, it's going to come with some challenges, and some of those challenges are going to be public safety challenges, response times, how fast we can get there, you know. The challenge out on the east end is that we could be dealing with a large-scale evacuation. So there's rightfully concern for that. The things that we can do to mitigate some of those challenges in providing more fuel reduction, weed abatement on the evacuation routes, different technologies that are out there that weren't available during the Canyon 2 to pretreat fuels in an evacuation route like some other agencies. like some other agencies are doing, we're looking at all those things. So, my commitment to the citizens is to make it as safe as I can, including our response with our cooperators, to respond, mitigate, and save as many structures as we can, and certainly save everybody's life. I will do that based on the direction I'm giving from the policy group on what risk they're comfortable in taking.
And I think I remember, you came before us to the Know Your Way Plan, maybe a year ago. Is it, did I understand it correctly, once, like, if there's a big fire that's moving towards Anaheim Hills from the east, Corona, that's where it comes usually with the Santa Anas, that if residents have left, they're not allowed to get back in? They're prevented from getting back in, even if their kids are there, or their elderly grandmother, or their pets, they can't come back in?
So, that's one of the challenging evacuations. And local residents, they know the streets certainly, and they'll find ways back in if that's really what they wanna do. But under evacuation, first of all, a mandatory evacuation's not mandatory. So, we try and get as many people out of the area for their safety and the safety of first responders. But people may not leave. Often, what happens is, once the fire encroaches, and the environment turns dark, and firebrands are hitting all over, they decide, now's the time I wanna go. Now they're on the road, as firefighters are trying to, and they're clogging up some of those roads. But once we get them out and we get them past whatever that checkpoint is, we're not gonna allow them back in. And we have other things that we discuss for kids at school, because if my young children were at school, I wanna go get them too. I totally understand that. But once people are going back in, coming out, you can see the congestion is gonna get worse and worse, especially as emergency vehicles are trying to use a lane to get in there, to set up, to protect. So, we have plans, and we're always improving those plans with buses at the schools, us using our ambulances or vehicles to go get elderly people. Not that this is a Know Your Way thing, but being prepared is a much deeper conversation that I love to have with people, that if you're not, and you're trying to figure it out on that day, it's gonna be challenging for you, and I'm gonna worry about you, because you can be in harm's way.
Well, I've been evacuated a lot of fires, unfortunately. Laguna, Simi, these ones, right? And a lot of times, it happens when I'm already at work. So, it's not like, you know, so there's, if it's during the workday, a lot of people are already at work, and maybe their kids, you know, are at school, or their elderly grandmother, or their pets, and, you know, so it's not just people leaving and coming back. I think it's people that are at work, like, oh, my gosh, my kid's at school.
Yeah, so that's a good point, and that's one of the things, and I think that was one of the things that was referred to with the literature and the money to put on more educational pieces, like we do now on that plan, that, just like an earthquake plan, or any natural disaster, if you're at work and your kids are at school, what is your plan? What phone tree do you have with your neighbors and other family members? And can they self-evacuate, walk, you know, 10 blocks and be out of the, you know, all those things, but they need to be worked out on the front end, is I guess what is important to understand. And then, maybe your neighbors go on vacation, so what is your other plan? And the one thing, we do have a few advantages. One, we track fire weather very, very closely. So, Santa Ana winds are predictable. So, there are, and we get that information out. Mike Lister, our Community Communications Officer, and his team are extremely well of getting that information out to the public. So, maybe when you see that, that's when you have to make sure, what is our plan? Do we have our stuff packed and ready to go, so we're not grabbing things and leaving too late? We have fuel in the car? Where are our kids going? And I've had people tell me, we kept our kids home from school for a couple days because of the Santa Ana winds, and we wanted to have them there to evacuate. I don't fault them. You know, that's, you know, whatever that plan is, but it's gotta be done on the front end, it's gotta be exercised, it's gotta be adjusted based on those variables, just like any other natural, if you live in an area that gets tornadoes, you have a plan for that.
Yeah, just after watching, you know, the Eaton Fire in Palisades, it kind of scared me a little bit, seeing how fast they came up. But thank you so much for your service. I so admire our firefighters and the department you lead, that they do such a great job. They've just saved a lot of houses.
My biggest, if I may, my biggest message to the wonderful people in Anaheim, and we're talking out in East Anaheim, is to know that we're there for them through our prevention issues, through our fuel mitigation, for our response, and any recovery, whatever is decided or not, that's, you know, that's not my wheelhouse, but we're there to make it as safe for them during an incident, after an incident, and certainly before an incident as we can. That's my, you know, obligation.
And you all do a wonderful job. Thank you for your service. And then, a quick question, maybe, for staff. What is the status on...
Thank you, yes.
What is, thank you so much. What is the status on the Fairmont Bridge over the 91? Because I know we've talked about that before, too, that there's very little ins and outs from Anaheim Hills, that fire construction, and the one thing that was planned but never developed was the Fairmont Bridge over the 91, giving another escape route to the residents. What's the status of that?
Thank you. Corey Wilkerson, I'm a principal planner in the Traffic Engineering Group, Public Works. So, the Fairmont connection, there is a Fairmont connection that's identified in the city's circulation element. It is a connection that goes from the north side of the 91, the Yorba Linda side, and connects down to the 91 with on and off ramps at that point. But the connection ends there. It doesn't connect all the way south to Santa Ana Canyon. That project is a project that's identified in the SR 91 implementation plan. It was previously lower on the list. The City of Anaheim, in partnership with the City of Yorba Linda, have been working with OCTA to try and raise the priority of that particular project on the implementation list, so that we can hopefully see that project get implemented faster. But at this point, we don't have a specific timeline of when that will happen.
What's the fastest it could be built, once it's approved? Is that like a one-year thing, or like a 10-year thing? I don't know.
It's, you know, it would be a significant construction project, because it's a bridge over the, both the Santa Ana River and the 91 freeway. Once it gets across the 91 freeway, it terminates there. And so, there is a gap still between where Fairmont currently stubs on the north side of Santa Ana Canyon, and where this bridge would kind of come down, and the ramps would be installed. So, the city's been looking at other options for how we can perhaps add, you know, some sort of emergency vehicle access through there that would allow for connection. But because the circulation element, that connection is not in the circulation element, and there's been community input in the past about the connection, it's not, that final connection is not currently planned for or funded for.
And what about the top of Weir Canyon? I heard rumors years ago that there was gonna be some sort of exit out the top of Weir Canyon. Is that not in the running at all anymore?
That's no, yeah, that was, at some point, there was a planned connection for the, to the toll road 241, or whatever, from Weir Canyon. That's no longer on the books. It's not planned for in the circulation element either.
And there's no more kind of possible ins and outs, or exits, or...
Not at this time, no.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
I have a question for you. The 241-91 project...
Yep.
Is that going to alleviate traffic on Santa Ana Canyon, Weir Canyon, for us?
Is it going to alleviate traffic? I think that is the intention of that project. Is it gonna solve traffic? Probably not.
Okay, but that is going to help us?
It will, it will help to a certain extent. I mean, it provides a direct connection from the toll roads into the fast track, and that will kind of help to cut down on some of that bottleneck that happens there. But it is, it's not the final solution for all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Just, hold on. So, from Santa Ana Canyon to the 91, there's not planned anything to have anybody really move publicly, at least?
From...
From Santa Ana Canyon to the 91, on Fairmont?
On Fairmont. So, no, there is not a, there's not currently a plan for direct vehicle access from Fairmont to that bridge that would come from the north side to connect to the 91.
So, how far does the bridge extend?
So, the bridge would extend, it'd be easier to show in an area, but the bridge comes across, comes across the freeway, and there's still kind of an open space that's between where Fairmont currently kind of stubs, and then where that is at. So, the city is looking at, you know, how to provide emergency vehicle access through there, or basically a way for us to, you know, have something constructed there that would not be open during regular commute period, or during regular traffic times, but would be closed off, and then could be opened up to allow for vehicles trying to evacuate to the area, to access that bridge, and ultimately to get, to either get onto the 91, or to get over the 91 and northward into Yorba Linda.
Okay, you're saying they're looking at it. So, right now, it's approved for the short, it doesn't go the whole way?
Correct. That's what's in the circulation element.
The circulation element gets amended, how often?
We just did a pretty comprehensive update of the circulation element, the general plan, that came across your guys' desk not too long ago. I think the previous update had been, it had been quite a few years since that had been updated previously.
Okay, thank you.
Very welcome.
Anyone else? I have one more question for staff on the parking issue. Can our recommendation, assuming the proponent is agreeable, include that they have to notify and enforce against their residents that they can't park in the 66 spots and the, what is it, 32 spots?
Yes, so, conditions of approval can be amended by the Planning Commission to add additional conditions. And if that's your desire, staff will recommend adding more broader conditions regarding parking management, and kind of list that specificity, and also make that a living document if there's any other issues that they need, based on operation, they need to update it, and they can update it with approval with the director, for planning and building director.
Would the proponent be agreeable?
Yes, we'd be agreeable. We have done that in the past, and we would have enforcement on site, so we'd have security, and we do have management on site every day. It's a difficult thing to enforce, as you can imagine, because you have to see where the person is going. But there are ways that we've found where guests can get, you know, vouchers, so that they can place in their dash. There are various ways we can do that. So, we can figure out a way to enforce it. We are very interested in the success of the retail on the upper deck. They're great tenants, they've been there a long time, and we want them to remain successful.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to comment on the $100,000 that you're providing to our fire department to help mitigate fire. Wanted to thank you guys for that, and for the CCTV system that would be installed. When the theater was still open, we had 1,000 cars, or that amount of people, to evacuate throughout the day, up through, what, midnight, times the theater closed, midnight. So, I'm just, I understand the evacuation issue. I had to evacuate in the Canyon Two fire, and it was a mess. It took hours. I couldn't evacuate. I was supposed to. I tried, and I ended up having, just to go back home. We didn't have an evacuation plan, like we do now, where the city has partnered with CAL FIRE and Caltrans and the county. We didn't have that in place. But we do now. And I'm confident that the city, fire, and police, and traffic has done their due diligence with our evacuation plan, and with what they've increased with the fire and adding the CCTV So, that's my comment. I just wanted to thank you guys for that. I don't know if you guys have any other comments.
Let me make, I'll make a quickie comment. As some of the people here may recall, Doug, where are you? I was the only person up here who voted against the Salt Creek project.
Two.
Oh, okay. Anyways, but I look at this, I look at this project as apples and oranges. Yes, there are some similar concerns, but you're looking at putting apartments on an already-built environment with the pre-existing theater there that would have had a large headcount, you know, during operation. And I, I'm, I just, I support this project. And I appreciate our commissioner's comment about the Know Your Way, that, the plan, it's never been in place, you know, it's been in place for a little over a year, or maybe two years, but it's untested. And, you know, you've got to have faith in the system someplace. Anyways, that's really all I've got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. With or without my extra condition?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the additional condition, if...
Same. Okay. Any comments or discussion? Very good. I guess we vote.
Six yes votes, one no vote. Commissioner Kelly, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
I don't understand how you can vote against it.
Don't burn us, we'll be back.
We'll be back when we all burn down.
You guys should talk to somebody else in the fire to help us, because these people don't know anything about Anaheim Hills.
I have to go on with the meeting, sir. So, I appreciate your comments.
Not Anaheim Hills, not, you know, the traffic.
I appreciate your comments, sir.
Couldn't you get my kids in the last two fires because of the traffic? It's not just Anaheim Hills.
I do appreciate your comments, sir.
Good evening, Chair Walker, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lisandro Orozco, and I will be presenting this item tonight. I'm joined by Elaine Tanspessidi, Principal Planner. Item number five is a request for a final site plan, a minor conditional use permit, a minor amendment to the OC-Vibe master site plan for parking deck A. The presentation's roughly about 11 minutes. The site associated with this final site plan is within the OC-Vibe master site plan as outlined in red. Two additional final site plans, outlined in brown, are currently under review by staff and will be presented to the Planning Commission for review at a future date. Five other previously approved final site plans, outlined in green, are currently under The proposed project is located at 1715 South Douglas Road, and is currently developed with six industrial buildings. Surrounding land uses include the Ares Hotel to the north, Arctic to the east. Arctic to the east, and the 57 freeway to the south and west. The applicant proposes to demolish five existing industrial buildings. An existing single-story industrial building on the south end of the property outlined in green would remain and be used as accessory storage to support Arctic and Honda Center operations. The applicant is requesting approval of a final site plan for the design of parking deck A. The structure would include 1,840 parking spaces in seven levels, digital advertising display, murals, and associated landscaping and hardscaping. The structure would be served by three vehicular entry lanes with two at the north driveway and one at the south driveway. The north driveway would serve as a primary access point and would provide a combined 365 linear feet of vehicular stacking. Pedestrians would enter the structure from Douglas Road at two access points indicated by the red arrows, leading to a combination of stairs, escalators, and elevators for vertical circulation up to the seventh level. The structure would provide parking for multiple user groups as required by the development agreement. The structure would serve Arctic Transit customers and employees, OC-Vibe visitors and event attendees, and future Meadow Park visitors. Access to parking for these users would always be free of charge. In addition, a future pedestrian bridge across Douglas Road would connect the third level of the structure directly to the second level of Arctic. The pedestrian bridge is not a component of this request, as it is subject to review and approval by the Public Works Director and the Planning and Building Director. The proposed landscaping, architectural treatments, and materials have been selected to ensure compatibility with the surrounding developments and contribute positively to the surrounding urban environment in the vicinity. The design incorporates materials, colors, and lighting that are consistent with Arctic. The static billboards shown in the renderings are for reference only, and they are not a component of this final site plan, as they are subject to review and approval by the City Council. The design of the project complies with the Platinum Triangle Master Land use plan and the OC-Vibe master site plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the final site plan. The applicant is requesting minor amendments to the approved OC-Vibe master site plan to reflect the changes proposed for parking deck A. Various sheets within the approved OC-Vibe master site plan would be updated to reflect the specific components of this final site plan. In addition, there is a revision to the phasing exhibits of the OC-Vibe master site plan in order to advance the construction of parking deck A and Meadow Park in advance of the 2028 Los Angeles Olympic Games. The Planning and Building Director is the approval authority for a master site plan, including minor amendments. However, since this request is related to other zoning actions before the Planning Commission, the director has referred the minor amendment for concurrent action. In accordance with the required findings for a minor modification, staff believes that the proposed modifications do not intensify or significantly change the nature of the approved use, as the parking structure was identified as a component of the OC-Vibe master site plan, and changes will continue to further the goals and objectives of the Platinum Triangle Master Land Use Plan and the OC-Vibe master site plan. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the minor amendment to the OC-Vibe master site plan. The applicant is requesting a minor conditional use permit to reduce the setback at six locations along Douglas Road and the 57 freeway. The Platinum Triangle mixed-use overlay zone allows modifications to the setback requirements through the approval of a minor conditional use permit. The Planning and Building Director is the approval authority for a minor conditional use permit. However, since this amendment request is related to other zoning actions before the commission, the director has referred the minor conditional use permit for concurrent action. Along Douglas Road, the code requires a minimum 10-foot setback, depicted in green on the slide. The applicant proposes to meet the required setback for most of the structure, however requests a reduction at two locations along, adjacent to Douglas Road. The first location is at and adjacent to the northerly driveway, where portions of the structure would be at the property line. The second location, shown on the right, is at the southeast corner of the structure, where the setback is reduced to eight feet. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a reduction in setback along Douglas Road to allow two pedestrian wayfinding signs to be located within the setback. Sign one would be two feet from the property line, and sign two would be five feet from the property line. The final design of these signs is not a component of this final site plan, as they are subject to review and approval by the City Council. Along the 57 freeway, the code requires a minimum 10-foot setback, also depicted in green, with a six-foot setback permitted for up to 20% of the building frontage. The applicant is proposing to reduce the required setback at two locations. The first location is to accommodate an exterior vehicular drive that would be parallel to the westerly property line with a setback of three feet, that's shown on the left. The second location is to retain the existing industrial building at the south end of the property, where the building would be located on the property line, that's shown on the right. In accordance with the required findings for a minor conditional use permit, staff believes the setback reductions would not adversely affect the adjoining land uses, as the location of the setback for the structure, vehicular driveway, and pedestrian wayfinding signs are not adjacent to an existing building. In addition, the setback reductions would not be detrimental to the health or safety, since the site layout provides adequate circulation and landscaped areas to buffer the structure from surrounding uses while maintaining adequate vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the minor conditional use permit. A minor conditional use permit was previously approved for the OC-Vibe mural plan. The applicant is requesting to amend the previously approved minor conditional use permit to add one additional mural to the OC-Vibe mural plan. The Planning and Building Director is the approval authority for a minor conditional use permit. However, since this amendment request is related to other zoning actions before the commission, the director has referred minor conditional use permit for concurrent action. The mural would be located on the elevator core wall along the east facade of the structure, facing Douglas Road. The mural would be 91 feet in height, 33 feet in width, and cover an area of 3,003 square feet. In accordance with the required findings for a minor modification, staff believes the addition of a single mural would not intensify the land use of the OC-Vibe project, as the mural is an aesthetic enhancement that would not generate new activities, traffic, or noise. Environmental Impact Report Number 339 was approved in 2010, increasing the allowable development intensities in the Platinum Triangle. The OC-Vibe project was approved in 2022 with addendum number 11, and subsequently amended in 2024 with addendum number 13 to the CIR. Staff recommends the Planning Commission find that previously certified Environmental Impact Report Number 339 and associated addenda are the appropriate environmental documentation for this request. An environmental determination of substantial conformance was prepared to determine that this CIR and subsequent addenda adequately analyzed the anticipated effects of the proposed project, and that the approved mitigation measures are appropriate for the project. In conclusion, the development is carefully designed and a planned project that continues to implement the OC-Vibe master site plan. The project also conforms to the Platinum Triangle Master Land Use Plan and the Platinum Triangle Mixed Use Overlay Zone, and staff believes that the proposed development would be an enhancement to the Platinum Triangle. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. In addition, the applicant and their team is present and also available to answer questions from the commission.
Thank you very much. Questions? Then come on up. I'm opening the public hearing before you say anything.
Well, good evening, Chair Walker and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Hicks. I'm with the OC-Vibe Development Team. We're really proud to present the final site plan for what we're calling the Arctic Garage. This is a fulfillment of our master plan to create a really dynamic transit-oriented development in Anaheim utilizing the existing Arctic train station. I want to thank Lysandro and Elaine and the city staff for their thorough presentation and work on this project. I think it shows in what we present, we work hand-in-hand with staff to better our plans and make for a better project. And so their fingerprints are on this project as well. I think you probably noticed in the rendering the design reflects its connection to the Arctic, so the materials, the lighting, and it's the colors. It's all meant to pay tribute to the Arctic, the existing structure. And we're really excited because Deck A, as it's called in the plans, but what we're calling the Arctic Garage, kicks off Phase Two. So we're well underway with Phase One with more than $1 billion worth of construction. Thanks to our ownership and our leadership, we are accelerating our plans, as staff mentioned, to deliver Arctic Garage, Meadow Park, and the bridge over Katella in advance of the 2028 Summer Olympics, when Honda Center hosts indoor volleyball. We're excited to have events every day of the Olympics, days 1 through 11. We'll have four matches a day. So this experience will be a great arrival for people who come to the district for the Olympics and BIA. And I think it was mentioned, we even have an additional mural, so it shows our commitment to public art. That was part of our vision as part of the master plan. So, and then there's a pedestrian bridge, final thing to note, that will lead to more people circulating through the train station, which I think is an objective that we share with the City of Anaheim, to have better utilization of the train station. So I stand here ready to answer any questions, but thank you for this opportunity, and thanks again to staff.
Questions, anybody?
I did, or just a comment. Beautiful project, and you know, we've talked about this before in our private meetings, I'll say it before, again, that just to keep in mind that the train station is primarily a train station.
Yes.
I was there today. And that the people need, the train people need access to it, because I know there were a couple times, like there were events where, you know, you're running for your train, you can't get through, you have to go around, you miss your train, and that's a disaster for everyone. So just keep in mind, it's primarily a train station and secondarily an event space.
Yes.
When it doesn't interfere with it. Maybe they could just have a little place where they could walk up the middle or something. But beautiful project.
Comments noted, and thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. No comments. Okay, I'm gonna, anyone else wish to speak on this project? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the item for approval.
I'll second.
I think we got a couple seconds, so I'm not sure who actually seconded it. Shall we vote?
Seven yes votes, a motion carries.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. We'll see you in a few weeks. Update, Scott?
Before we move on to, on to the Planning Commission's schedule for the next two meetings, just want to remind the Planning Commission on the coming mandatory Brown Act and Ethics Training that's scheduled on December 2nd, Tuesday, 5:00 PM at this chamber. So please send your confirmation to City Clerk's Office by November 28th. And if you cannot make that training for some reason, just let them know, and then they'll work with you to see the replacement training.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. I think I told you all these items last meeting, but we'll go over them again. On the December 1st Planning Commission meeting, we have a density increase request from the Wyndham Hotel and the Anaheim Resort. You will see OC-Vibe again with their South Plaza final site plan. And we have an athletics conditional use permit request for an indoor softball facility for OCB Athletics. On December 15th, we will see OC-Vibe again for their residential final site plan. We have a request for a parking variance for the Bank of America Building here in downtown. We have an amendment request from Brewery X, and we have, and likely on the 15th, we will have a request for a new Porsche dealership at Lincoln and Loaure. We're hoping that all of these items are able to get onto the December 15th meeting, and should that be the case, then likely at the 15th, we will ask you to cancel the 29th, the meeting on the 29th. But we're not certain yet as to whether or not all of these items can actually get on the 15th. That's our goal is.
Okay. Anything else? We're adjourned. Thank you.